All right. Good morning, everybody. It's eight thirty. We'll call this morning's meeting of the Clay County Board of Commissioners to order for Tuesday, October seventh. Our first item will be the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'll offer a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Behr. Any further discussion on the motion? Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Next, we have employee recognitions. We have one today. Holly. Holly, congratulations on twenty-five years of service to Clay County.
Thank you.
And I'll bet you never realized you'd have the media here for you today.
Thank you.
All right, Quinn, do you want to?
Oh, I sure do. Got the camera ready, okay.
Yeah.
I've had the privilege of working alongside Holly in many roles over the years, and I can say without hesitation that she represents the very best of leadership. She handles a delicate balance of program knowledge, inter-agency collaboration, and finances and budgets with poised professionalism. She's also a master planner and organizer who communicates effectively both up and down the chain, and she has a unique ability to be professional, approachable, and supportive all at once. I consistently hear from her staff, many of which are right here in the back, how much they value her leadership. In fact, her staff nominated her. She was recognized with a statewide award for leadership by M S S A, an honor that speaks to how highly her staff and colleagues regard her. I'm able to see firsthand the positive impact she has on her team and the entire agency. Holly, I want you to know how much I admire the way that you lead with both strength and kindness. You've made a real difference to everybody in Clay County. I'm so thankful I get to work alongside you. Truly one of a kind. Congratulations on twenty-five years.
All right, next, we have citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens to be heard on items not on the agenda this morning? Yes, sir. Do you want to go up and give your name?
Thanks for hearing me. David Cragness, Felton, Minnesota. I was motivated to be here today by your notification of a six percent potential increase in property taxes. That amounts to about thirty-two hundred dollars in my regard. I'd like to spend my full three minutes complaining about how the ag land shouldn't be taxed in this regard. There's going to be little or no profits in agriculture this year, and there will be little or no next year as per projections. And the unfairness of the system that we have here in Clay County and across the state of Minnesota taxing ag land and taxing businesses just because there's no way to hide it is completely unfair. Since I'm a retired farmer, you're now taxing my retirement account. You don't tax anybody else's 401K pension plan or antique car collection. So that's completely unfair. The largest increase I saw, I believe, was in social services, and I'd like to point out that soybeans don't need social services, corn doesn't need social services, and it's unfair. Again, it's unfair to be taxing ag land for services that they don't need. Roads and bridges, yes, ag land needs roads and bridges, but the large increase in that is unreasonable, unjust, unfair, and I'd like you to see what you can do to make sure that those are as low as possible. I just read that the census data shows that in 2023, Minnesota spent per person in poverty forty-six thousand dollars per person. Now, that's addition of federal, state, local, and community dollars spent on a per person that's under poverty. And I tried to find out exactly what they meant by poverty. The federal poverty guideline says that's fifteen hundred, fifteen thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars a year. And there are certain percentages of that that qualify you for different programs, but in no place did I see that it was over thirty-one thousand dollars a year. So the forty-six thousand dollars that state of Minnesota spends, which is second only to Massachusetts, forty-six thousand dollars per person when there's only, it's got to be only thirty-one thousand dollars to be considered in poverty, it shows how inefficient government is at providing services. And once again, we need to look at all that. There's a line item in your budget for the new DMV building, and it's interesting, after you've spent that much money on that building, I still find it more convenient and better service to drive to Holly where they use an old, paid-for building in downtown. We're having, we're hearing much about fraud and abuse in social services programs in the state of Minnesota. Federal charges are currently being filed, handed out in Minneapolis. Excuse me. No, I believe we are better than Minneapolis here in Clay County, but our, what's the level of fraud and abuse do we have? I'm certain that there are some. Is there enough that that could be eliminated to take care of the increase in the budget? I'm concerned in that if we have that, if we have the level of fraud here in Clay County that they are finding in Minneapolis and St. Paul, probably you could give us money back instead of raising taxes. So enough about the complaining. And eloquent as it was, it was complaining. So what should you do? First, you should push back on St. Paul. No unfunded mandates. If you don't, if they don't send you the money, they shouldn't be able to tell you what to do. Push back as hard as you possibly can. I want you to make every effort possible to eliminate local fraud and waste, to make sure that the, all the programs are being run efficiently and there's not money being given away or shouldn't be given. And thirdly, if you do need to raise taxes, raise taxes on gravel. There's, we heard about all the travel traffic that can be coming down Highway twenty-six. It happens that just as they're talking about a new data center in North Dakota, there's a new gravel pit opened up along Highway twenty-six and an old one reopened along twenty-six. Not unlike oil in North Dakota, gravel is a one-time extraction from the state of Minnesota, and Clay County should be harvesting as much as they can from the state of North Dakota where the data center doesn't seem to have any concerns about budget and where the lot of gravel is going into the dam around Fargo. So any taxes that were raised on Clay County residents as a result, they're actually paying themselves because they're turning around, they'd have to pay less county taxes because they paid higher gravel tax. So I think that would be a win-win. So there's my suggestions. Push back on St. Paul, eliminate local fraud and waste, and raise gravel taxes if you need to raise taxes.
Thank you for your time. I'll ask you a question for me. Any questions? Thank you, David. Do we have any other citizens who would like to be heard? Any other citizens? Any of them online, Steve?
No one, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Then we move in then to, by the way, I'm just going to comment on the preliminary levy. It is our hope that that doesn't stay at that number. We set that as the maximum that it can be. We're going to do everything that we can to help bring that down. Well, it's, it's a start. All right. Next, we have the approval of bills and vouchers.
I'll give a vote.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kravna, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion on the motion? Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign? Motion carried. Next, we have the minutes from September sixteenth and September twenty-third. Unless anybody has corrections to one, we'll take a motion to approve them both.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from September sixteenth and September twenty-third.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Behr, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign? Motion carried. All right, our next item is the Clay County Extension National Four-H Week Presentation and Proclamation. Good morning.
All right, good morning, you guys. We're glad to be here today. We're going to share for a few minutes about Clay County Extension, and then, as you mentioned, it is National Four-H Week, so we'll touch on that as well. We, with the University of Minnesota Extension, are partners with Clay County government. Extension brings research-based education and hands-on learning right here to Clay County. Whether you're looking to grow healthy gardens, strengthen your family and community, or explore youth programs, or expand your knowledge in agriculture, the Extension program is here to help.
All right. Extension's mission is to be accessible to everyone in the county, connect people with practical solutions and resources, build individual skills and strengthen communities, connecting you with the knowledge, tools, and support that create a meaningful change at home, at work, and across our communities. We're just going to introduce ourselves here really quick. My name is Jillian Patri, and I am the Extension Horticulture Educator in Clay County, and I also help support our Clay County Master Gardeners.
Okay, I think it's on now. I'm Amelia Landsberg. I am one of our four-H educators in Clay County.
And my name is Monique Stelzer. I am also one of the Four-H Youth Development Extension educators in Clay County. So your Clay County Extension team members offer unique areas of expertise. We each have a focus or specialty area that we support, and because Clay County government has invested in the local Extension program, we, as Extension staff, are able to tap into both the regional and statewide network of Extension specialists, who also bring additional programs, trainings, and community development initiatives to Clay County's communities. You know, as we move into the rest of our presentation, we do want to pause for just a second to note that it is National Four-H Week. National Four-H Week is a celebration that's been going on for decades, and we're excited to share that with you guys today. And we did bring forward a proclamation that we're hoping Board Chair Kevin Campbell is willing to share, proclaiming National Four-H Week throughout Clay County as well. So we'll take a pause for him to share that, and then we'll continue with our presentation if you're okay with that.
Well, I'll tell you what, I'm going to have all of our board share in that proclamation.
Oh, that's awesome. I love it. Thank you so much.
We're going to start with Commissioner Mojo.
Whereas this year's National Four-H Week theme, Beyond Ready, reminds us that Four-H is building a ready generation in a world of change and equips young people with the skills for the future while meeting them where they are today.
Whereas Four-H is America's and Minnesota's largest youth development organization, supporting six million youth across the country and over fifty thousand youth in twenty-twenty-five across Minnesota, and?
Whereas Minnesota Four-H programs are delivered by the University of Minnesota Extension and provide experience for young people to learn by doing in all eighty-seven countries across the state.
Whereas Four-H is in every city and county in the United States and helps six million youth become engaged, successful, and independent, and?
Whereas Four-H connects young people and adults to their communities, preparing them for work and life through experimental and inquiry-based learning while providing emerging research for positive youth development, and?
Whereas expanding from its strong agricultural roots, Four-H helps young people explore the world around them and grow into productive adults, and?
Whereas supporting future leaders in science, agriculture, and community leadership is an important imperative for the United States Department of Agriculture, National Institute of Food and Agriculture Four-H Program, and?
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Clay County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim October fifth through eleventh, twenty-twenty-five as Four-H Week. Do I have a motion for the?
Mr. Chair, I'll move the proclamation.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Ebber. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried.
Thank you so much, you guys. I'm glad that you helped celebrate with us this week. Four-H's National Beyond Ready Initiative aims to prepare young people for the future by equipping them with the skills and abilities to be ready for work and ready for life. Through this initiative, we continue to prepare a ready generation of youth who are healthy, productive, engaged, and ready for a world that changes. Amelia's up next, and she's going to share a little bit more about that Beyond Ready Initiative.
Okay, so Four-H is building a ready generation by developing capable, caring, and contributing young people who strengthen communities and support our local priorities. Through hands-on learning and leadership, health, STEM, and agriculture, Four-H prepares youth to become responsible citizens whose positive impact extends beyond themselves, creating long-term value for families, communities, and a society as a whole. Young people leave Four-H ready for work and ready for life. In Clay County specifically, Four-H clubs contribute to their communities through various service projects like growing food to reduce food insecurity, labeling storm drains to protect our water supply, painting fire hydrants to help maintain our emergency services system, and picking up garbage to beautify our public roadways. Clay County Four-Hers understand that being a responsible citizen means caring for yourself and your community.
So part of that big hairy audacious goal for National Four-H is while National Four-H currently serves six million youth, in the next five years, they'd like to reach ten million youth. That's nearly doubling the numbers. And Minnesota Four-H, of course, has a pretty audacious goal as well. We'd like to see our numbers grow. Locally, in Clay County, we reached seven hundred and two youth with direct programming last year. That means they participated in a Four-H-led program. It was not indirect. We reached seven hundred and two young people. Through the workshops, events, and volunteer engagement, Extension staff are able to build a community of empowered young people and volunteers. Last year, seven hundred and two young people received direct programming through Clay County Four-H, and staff led more than one hundred workshops, events, and meetings. As youth development professionals, we don't do it alone. This is why we identify, train, and support volunteers to help lead young people in our organization. Our work with volunteers enables local Extension staff to reach a larger number of young people. On top of building the strong volunteer base, Extension staff work directly with local youth through project-based workshops. We provide after-school programs, day camps, training workshops, as well as project learning committees.
So Clay County has seen high numbers of retention and growth in the past year. Our youth served in our programs and clubs are able to build their life skills through project-based learning, again, and leadership opportunities that prepare them for similar experiences once they've moved on from the organization. Because youth are presented with the opportunity to participate in Four-H programs and clubs, they can then bring the knowledge and experience that they gained in Extension to other areas of their life and out into their communities. Now, we are going to have one of our Four-H members, Bridget Hendrickson, talk about her experience in Four-H.
Good morning, Bridget.
Good morning. My name is Bridget Hendrickson. I'm in tenth, I'm in tenth grade at Barnsville High School. I've been in Four-H for nine years and am secretary in my club. In my county fair, I show rabbits, chickens, and many static exhibits like food preservation, photography, and many more. I have been to the state fair twice in the past two years. I first got interested in food preservation when I made jam with my grandmother. We decided to enter in the fair, and ever since then, I've made something each year to show. This year, I brought my homemade crock pot applesauce to the state fair and received a blue ribbon and a Community Impact Award for it. One of my most memorable moments of this year at the state fair was the conference judging. I learned how to explain my process more clearly and confidently. I also enjoyed listening to others at my table share how they made their items. One thing I struggled with was selecting the right items and finding the right amount of cinnamon. I always enjoy going to the state fair with my family. After showing, we walk around to see the other exhibits, try the food, and enjoy the fair together. It's something I look for every year. After Four-H, my plan is to go to college and earn a bachelor's degree in accounting. Since I've loved math since I was a kid, my short-term goal is to finish high school and college, and my long-term goal is to build a career, start a family, and live a happy life. Four-H has taught me responsibility, confidence, and the value of hard work. I'm grateful for the experiences I've had and have yet to learn. Thank you.
So Bridget, I want to tell you a real short little story. Many, many years ago, one of my sons was in Four-H at the same age as you, and she was in Four-H and shared a lot of her experiences with this gal right to the right of me here, Commissioner Mojo. And the leadership skills that you learn, it brings to that level. So congratulations on what you're doing.
All right. Hello again. With an Extension, Horticulture Education falls under the Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources, or ANR for short. This area of Extension aims to provide effective research-based education and integrate diverse perspectives to address critical issues impacting Minnesota's agricultural and natural resource systems. In Clay County, I engage with colleagues, partners, stakeholders, and volunteers to divine resident and community issues and develop lasting solutions. So one important priority here in Clay County is providing technical assistance, so answering resident questions about home horticulture, agriculture, and kind of everything plant-related. And site visits are one of those signature services that Extension provides to communities where Clay County residents receive one-on-one assistance and tailored solutions. In addition to technical assistance, Clay County Extension offers a wide array of ways university resources are delivered to residents. These include workshops, events, and outreach. As I mentioned before, too, I also support our Clay County Master Gardeners, and this is another way that Extension brings resources and knowledge to the communities through this volunteer program. The Clay County Master Gardener Volunteers had another year of amazing growth. With twenty-one active members, they managed to log seven hundred and twenty-eight volunteer hours here in Clay County. They hosted events and workshops and maintained several gardens throughout the county. They are looking forward to another busy year and new projects, including the installation of a pollinator habitat garden at the Crystal Sugar Offices in North Morehead. We have five 2026 interns that will be starting in January. Today, I have with you Tim Walzine. He has been a Clay County Master Gardener since 2020, and he's going to share his experience with the Clay County Master Gardener Program.
Good morning. Thank you. As Jill said, I've been an Extension Master Gardener Volunteer since 2020, and one of the things that I really enjoy as part of being a Master Gardener is the impact that I can make on my communities in Clay County, friends, family, and individuals that I run across in this volunteer work. We do a number of projects throughout the community, and what I really appreciate about being able to serve in this way is the connections that I make with people who are curious about gardening, who have questions, who are experienced, who are inexperienced, kids and adults as well. I've done some teaching of community education classes over the years. I've been part of the Garden Tour, the Clay County Master Gardener Garden Tour, the last couple of years. When it was still in existence, I was one of the caretakers of the Rose Garden Trial Project that was located over in Dilworth. I've volunteered at the farmer's market in Morehead and at the county fair a couple of times where you have a chance to share knowledge and experience and just interact with the public. I really appreciate the research that the University of Minnesota does on agriculture and horticulture, and to have access to that through the system and be able to share skills and knowledge with community members and the latest research and techniques. I enjoy the camaraderie with my fellow Master Gardeners. We meet regularly, and we geek out on gardening and all kinds of different things, and it's fun to have that community of like-minded gardeners. Thank you.
Okay, in addition to our individual program priorities, the Clay County Extension team is working together to support programming for the whole community. As a team, we utilize each other's expertise to elevate our programming. Collaborative projects that we've done have included the Clay County Fair, Four-H afternoon, after-school programs, and summer camps, Four-H Project Activity Day, and community events like Flutter Fest. Event reports from the Clay County Fair and Flutter Fest are both included in your information packets, so feel free to read those after today's meeting.
All right. The Extension Service brings university knowledge directly to our communities through direct programming, community partnerships, and volunteer service. By offering free and trusted education in areas like horticulture, youth development, youth development, and family wellness, Extension makes everyday life better while strengthening the places we live, work, and play.
Extension equips individuals with skills that ripple outwards. Extension helps reduce public costs, foster resilience, and ensures a healthier, more prosperous future for everyone in our community. Extension starts by providing private value to our program participants who gain knowledge, skills, and experience through their Extension programs. But the benefit doesn't end there. Those same participants take those skills and experience forward to the other people and places that they connect with, whether it's community boards, community events. Participants are using their knowledge and skills that they've learned through Extension in their churches, their schools, and throughout their community. Extension participants gain knowledge, practice skills, and then apply those same assets throughout the other areas of their lives.
All right. To wrap things up, the Clay County Extension Service transforms university research into practical, locally-focused education that improves everyday life, strengthens families and communities, supports economic growth, protects natural resources, and reduces public costs, creating lasting value for every citizen. Thank you so much for supporting Extension in Clay County. We appreciate everything that you do for us, and we'd be happy to answer any questions or take any comments at this time.
Commissioner Behr.
I was wondering, how does one become a Master Gardener?
Good question. Yes, every year, we have an application period that begins at August first and goes through October first. So you fill out an application that garners your interest in becoming a Master Gardener. There are a few background checks that need to be done since we do volunteer with vulnerable adults and children. And then you register for the course, which is a self-paced online course that you can complete in one year. And then in that first year, you're considered an intern, and in that first year, you complete fifty hours of volunteer service. And then after you complete the course, in that fifty hours, then you become an active Master Gardener, and then from then on, you do twenty-five hours of volunteer service, or as much as you want to. That's just the minimum, and then do about six hours of continuing education. So, yep.
Noticed your numbers now are twenty-one that you showed.
Yes.
That's up quite a bit, I think, from not too long ago, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, so when I came into this position in January 2024, we had twelve. We had five interns that year, which they all completed the course and joined our program. This year, we have seven interns that are, they're completing the course, so at the end of the year, should be done with that. And then we have five that are coming in for 2026. So we're really, really excited with the numbers. It definitely helps us make a bigger impact.
Anybody else? I knew it. Commissioner Mojo would have something.
Yes. Thank you both for sharing your story and how this programming in Clay County has affected you and helped you, and we're really grateful that it's something that you've chosen to be active in. You know, I just want to maybe go back to the citizen that came before us to talk about some of the hard levy issues that we deal with, and it is really great for us to hear about some of the really good work that's happening on the front side of some of those hard stories, but to celebrate the successes and invest intentionally in programs that are really helping lift kids and individuals into great healthy programs that will help them with their entire life. So I also agree, Commissioner Campbell's son was a phenomenal leader, still is a great leader, and really had an effect on both of us. So I can't wait to see where Four-H takes you. But thank you all for being here today, and certainly Four-H Week is really important. So if you haven't read, the FM Extra has a really great story on programming in Clay County and some of the other great success stories with kiddos in the county, too. So, thanks.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you for your presentation. All right. Next, we have a proclamation for eligibility worker in case aid month. Good morning, Quinn.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Yes, I am here to request a proclamation recognizing October 2025 as eligibility worker in case aid month in Clay County. Just for you to know, in 2024, our twenty-nine eligibility workers each processed an average of eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight documents, which is about thirty-three documents per worker per day, along with nearly nine thousand in-office appointments, not including phone interviews or daily tasks. Despite this high volume, Clay County maintained an error rate of three percent, far below the statewide average, underscoring the incredible accuracy and timeliness of our staff. In fact, the timeliness threshold, we are at ninety-two point eight percent for all program applications, which kind of crushed the state threshold of seventy-five percent. So a huge shout-out to our eligibility workers there. Their customer service skills, professionalism, and attention to detail ensure that families, children, seniors, and individuals with disabilities receive the supports they need quickly and correctly. receive the supports they need quickly and correctly. In addition to the vital work of our eligibility workers, case aides provide essential behind-the-scenes support that keeps our operations running smoothly. They handle tasks that range from preparation and processing of forms to managing file documentation, assisting with client communications, and ensuring children in foster care have safe and meaningful contact with their parents. Their attention to detail and ability to juggle multiple responsibilities really allow our eligibility workers and social workers to focus on the more complex case determinations, making them an indispensable part of our service delivery system. And with that, I would yield for any questions, but I do have an attached proclamation if the board is so inclined to proceed.
All right, we have the, yes, Commissioner Mojo. Yes.
Thank you for bringing this forward. Thanks for the data. I think it's really important for the public to hear that. One thing that not all people know is eligibility is determining verification, right? So it's an element of us to go through and see if there is any potential fraud, weeding out what is, who is eligible to get the services, who is not eligible to get the services. So I, one, thank you so much for the work that you're doing. It's a really complex time, and I know the technology in which you work through finding out that information is also irrelevantly broken. And part of that is, to Mr. Cragness as well, is we spent a significant amount of time in St. Paul this year talking about how broken that modernization, how broken that technology piece was, and why the state, instead of slamming other unfunded mandates down us, needs to spend money on updating that service, so it helps us. You know, I will also say that error rate piece that we talk about substantially below what the state average that we see is. But I think it's important for the public to know, that's not always that our employee is putting that number in. The program automatically inputs information in, and we do a really great job of catching that. But for instance, you need to put in if an infant is a veteran or not, if an infant is married or not. Those are things that can be overseen accidentally, but those are pieces that we need to eliminate from the program completely. And so, one, thank you. I know we're going to do the proclamation, but I just want folks in this program area to know that we really, one, appreciate the work that you do. It's really tricky and painful and hard. But it's also, you're doing a really great job with antiquated programming, and so we appreciate it.
All right, Ezra.
And with that, recognition of October 2025 Eligibility Worker in Case Aid Month, whereas eligibility workers and case aides provide critical access to vital programs for healthcare, food, housing, and economic supports for thousands of residents in Clay County.
Whereas their dedication, compassion, and professionalism ensure that all residents are treated with dignity and respect, and?
Whereas the advocacy and timeliness, safeguard resources, protect families, and connect families, connect people to essential services and moments of greatest need, and?
Whereas their invaluable contributions form the foundation of Clay County's social services and uphold the mission of serving the community.
Now, therefore be it resolved that the Clay County Board of Commissioners proclaims October 2025 as Eligibility Worker in Case Aid Month, and calls upon all residents to join in honoring the outstanding contributions of these employees.
We have a motion to approve the proclamation.
No second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kravonoff, second by Commissioner Bear. Any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. All right. Thank you, Quinn, on that one. Are you doing this next one?
Sure am.
Okay. We're running a little behind with our public hearing, but let's just see if we can get this.
I'll do my best.
All right.
I'm here for this action item to request approval to transfer four public health staff into social services. The intent of this proposal is to streamline the Min Choices Program, which is overseen by Jessica Mickelson. We really want to improve the operational efficiency between public health and social services to support the county budget goals. This plan involves transferring four FTEs from public health into social services, three Min Choices Assessor, and one Case Aid. Social Services receives a higher reimbursement rate for Min Choices Time Study Random Moments. By shifting these FTEs into social services, the county will maximize revenue capture through its existing reimbursement stream, creating cost savings for public health with the salaries and additional revenue for the county overall. However, it is important to note that beginning in 2027, Min Choices will no longer be a part of the time study due to legislative changes from this past session. While this transition generates immediate fiscal positive impacts for 2026's budget, the long-term structure will need to be reevaluated before January 1st, 2027, once the state finalizes the flat rate reimbursement funding for Min Choices work. We don't know what that is yet, but we do know the state needs to realize $9 million in savings in this area alone. I definitely have concerns that the revenue from this program will decrease, which will negatively impact our budget forecast for 2027. So long and short, good for 2026, but potentially bad for 2027. This proposal was brought before the Personnel Issues Committee, supported to move forward for you all to consider. Kind of the timeline on this, the public health staff would formally move into social services budget effective January 1st. However, the staff would physically move into our newly renovated fourth-floor wing in the Family Service Center in early December to complete the necessary training and onboarding. When it comes to the cost and the impact there, currently in public health, the four FTEs carry a projected salary and benefits of $434,233 for 2026, while those staff are projected to generate approximately $325,000 in revenue for public health based on prior performance. That leaves a net levy impact of $109,233. By transitioning these four FTEs into social services, we leverage our higher social services cost pool, which produces that higher reimbursement for the exact same work. When added on top of the revenue that's already generated by Jessica's staff in this program area, this change is projected to capture an additional $68,881 in revenue for 2026. So that means instead of carrying that $109,233 levy impact in public health, the county avoids that impact, but also gains a $68,881 in new revenue capacity. So in total, this would realize an estimated net benefit of $178,114 for 2026's budget. With that, I would yield for any questions that you may have.
Commissioner Ebberinger.
Yeah, Quinn, this came before, just to let the board know, it came before pick, and we recommended we make this move. I think it's a very prudent, cost-effective way of providing the same services, and we know it's going to be well-supervised and directed in your departments. I appreciate the candor in letting us know that we can only count on this for one year to meet the needs that we've identified here. But it is an example of the issue we're having with cost shifting coming out of the state. We have no control of that. We can be vocal about it. I think this commission's always been good at trying to get the public awareness that these are things that happen outside of our area of control. But I think next year's session is going to be pretty painful for counties. I think the Association of Minnesota Counties is aware of that. We're well-represented on that. Commissioner Mojo is very active in a lot of components on that, as am I. And Commissioner Kravonoff has gone up to the Capitol with Commissioner Mojo on a number of occasions. We've all been up there at least once this year, and we're going to continue to try and keep costs down. But this comes from the state, and we don't have any control of it. And I do appreciate the fact that you're identifying a way we can be more cost-effective this year. And as we move into the unknown, I'm sure you and your staff are going to be on top of it. But I think this is a very good recommendation, and I hope we can move forward with it.
Commissioner Mojo.
Quinn, I just want to thank you and staff for going back with pen after we directed with preliminary budget woes, really, how do we better articulate programming and what makes the most sense? It is unfortunate that there are such vast differences in what the reimbursable rate for services is across the board. That's part of what we're talking about in St. Paul, as said. But this certainly seems to make the most sense. And I appreciate, you know, from the conversations we've had, that you've all been very willing to continually look at this, to see what makes the most sense, understanding we want to serve the community with the most fiscally sound option as possible. So thank you.
Yes, space-wise, how are we doing with the?
Well, we're going to fill up that wing immediately with this transition, so.
It'll be tight, but we'll make it work.
When I came to Building Committee and said this solves our problems for the next three to five years, I didn't anticipate this. However, that shift did create openings in other wings on different floors. So we're still, we're doing okay.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of four public health staff positions into the Social Service Department effective January 1st, 2026.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bear, second by Commissioner Ebberinger. Any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Of note, I don't have it on the agenda, but it's important to note in Jessica's wing, we also are going to realize some additional licensing revenue. I don't believe I've brought that before the board yet. We learned about this after budgets were submitted. We're hoping that this will realize between about $100,000 to $120,000 in additional revenue as well, which will help offset that levy a little bit.
Great work.
Thank you.
May I?
Yes.
Question. So just to run under the points, we talked about what you're talking about licensing, and the two moves, that is a total, what's the total number on that? It's approaching?
It'd be $178,000 for the Min Choices transition and an additional $100,000 to $120,000 for the new licensing.
Awesome. That'll definitely help us. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next is our public hearing regarding Scott Dom's petition for text amendment to the Clay County Land Developments and Subdivision Ordinance. And if I recall correctly, this was a continuation from previous meeting?
Yeah, good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. It's still, the public hearing has been open this entire time.
So the hearing is already open, so we will, at this point in time, continue with the public hearing. And Matt, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is a petition for a text amendment to permit cannabis businesses as a conditional use in the Egg Service Center zoning district. This was brought by Scott Dom's and Elevated Dispensaries. I'm just a high-level overview of where the Egg Service Center zoning districts are located throughout the county. The petition requests, the petition cited the following reasons for allowing a cannabis business in the Egg Service Center District. So one being historic preservation. This is specific to that Green Elevator in Baker, described as an iconic egg structure that should be preserved and repurposed. Economic development, just with this project, they are projecting $1 million in revenue, and then with that, $75,000 to $100,000 a year in state tax contributions. Adaptive reuse, so positioning the elevator and other egg structures as kind of a more modern agricultural service center through cannabis cultivation and retail. And then just to provide a rural revitalization model and the potential to replicate this sort of adaptive reuse approach in other rural areas. So our current cannabis zoning is permitted in the highway commercial, in limited highway commercial zoning districts. You can kind of see where those are located in Clay County. Our Egg Service Center zoning districts are comprised of the small, unincorporated communities throughout Clay County. The purpose is to support rural residential, commercial, industrial, and agricultural industry, to supplement the agricultural economy of the county. So looking at these a little bit closer, we just did a kind of a high-level suitability analysis of all the parcels that would be in these Egg Service Center zoning districts, looking at about, relative to our setbacks for cannabis businesses in our code, particularly setback from residents, because most of them are residential properties. So of the 259 parcels in, across all these districts, we had 23 that would meet that 500-foot setback. That's about 8% of the parcels. Doesn't count for the entire parcel, but there are spots on each parcel where that would be met. And you can kind of see in each of our zoning or Egg Service Centers where these parcels are located. These would be the ones that are outlined in green. The only, I guess, town that would not basically have any parcels that would be compatible would be Rusted. We have not received any comments yet regarding this request. We do, all the townships were notified. The Planning Commission did go through our comprehensive, this request relative to our comprehensive and transportation plan goals and objectives, and did use these as part of their findings. And then two recommendations were made to our Planning Commission. So these would be based on the findings of fact. The Planning Commission was provided a recommendation for amendment approval based on that this use has the potential to revitalize and diversify agricultural service center economies. The use could also be considered similar to other conditional uses that are already permitted in the Egg Service Center zoning districts. So bar, restaurant, commercial entertainment, these business types would generate similar traffic, noise, lighting, and parking needs. And then that adaptive reuse of structures has the potential to stimulate the activity, promote economic activity, promote tourism, preserve structures that contribute to the rural character of Clay County. And then there's also a recommendation for denial, basically that the properties are overwhelmingly rural residential, and allowing an additional commercial or industrial use has potential to create land use conflicts. Would not meet setbacks for cannabis businesses on over 90% of the properties, and 42% of lots in the Egg Service Center don't meet our one-acre minimum lot size for a commercial use. This would result in variance requests. The Board of Adjustment, which ultimately, if you see have a lot of variance requests, it's kind of a sign that it's kind of undermining the intent of the ordinance. And then our Clay County Cannabis Ordinance is new, and I should state that we have, Clay County has permitted two cannabis businesses now. Both are in highway commercial zoning districts, and both were approved unanimously as well. So based on this discussion, the Planning Commission did make a recommendation to deny this amendment. To the Clay County Development Code, the vote to recommend denial was six to two. Key findings that were discussed by the Planning Commission include just the limited eligible parcels, the variance burden undermining the ordinance intent, potential land use conflicts, and then just that our comprehensive plan consistency. The ordinance is new, untested, so not really, really maybe want to make a change when we haven't seen kind of how it plays out so far. They did make a positive finding that this would likely not create an excessive burden on public facilities or utilities. Any questions for me at all about the Planning Commission recommendation? Or the proposed amendment?
Commissioner Bear.
In the petition request, you had put a note in there, Clay County would not receive any sales tax revenue from cannabis business. Would we, would we still get the revenue from our sales tax that we have countywide on that business?
That is not something that I'm sure of. I could find that out.
I believe we would, but I want to clarify that.
I don't, I don't know that in state law it exempts the local sales tax. There are certain things that were exempt, and that, I think that had to do with vehicles or recreational vehicles over a certain dollar amount or something. Was not subject to the entire local tax. But I would agree with you. I would think that that would be something that would still be taxed, including the local option sales tax.
It just wouldn't be that cannabis.
And we can make, you know, we can check for sure, but.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Moseau.
I'm looking through it. You know, there are some components to cannabis that's generally exempt from excise and sales tax in Minnesota.
And do we have, while she's looking that up, do we have any other comments or questions at this point from the board? If not, is the applicant?
Yep.
Here today?
Yep.
Would you care to comment at all? Okay. Do you want to come up to that podium there and state your name and?
My name is Scott Doms, and I'm the owner of Elevated Dispensaries.
If I can, if I can just, just for one second, Commissioner Moseau might have that answer for, to your question here.
Well, I'm just going to read directly from the Minnesota Department of Revenue, effective July first, 2025, cannabis tax rate will increase to fifteen percent. In addition to the cannabis tax, taxable cannabis products are subject to both the six point eight seven percent state general rate sales tax and any applicable local sales taxes based on where the transaction takes place.
All right. Okay. Now, with that, now you, I'm sorry, do you want to start over and?
Absolutely. Yeah. Good morning.
Is that mic on? Is it green?
Yeah.
No, the other one.
That's yours.
Okay. There you go.
Is that good?
Yeah.
All right, good morning. I just kind of took Matt's presentation and, and went back through it. So, we've got some comments on that. The staff finding for, was, staff finding one is cannabis uses are currently only allowed in highway commercial. Adding them to ASC could expand locations and create land use conflicts with rural residential uses. Our response is fairness and countywide equity. Restricting cannabis only to Highway ten corridors creates an economic monopoly in one area while excluding all six ASC towns. This is not equitable countrywi- countywide. We do know that there are a couple little other spots, but it's primarily located along Highway ten. Blight and lost opportunity. ASC towns are overwhelmingly residential, only because the businesses that once thrived there collapsed decades ago. Elevators, implement dealers, and stores closed, leaving behind blight. Intended purpose of ASC. The ASC district was created as a service and value-added hub for agriculture. This amendment restores that purpose by giving ASC towns a fair chance at new economic life. Staff finding two. Only eight percent of ASC parcels may meet setbacks. Approving cannabis in ASC could increase pressure for variances. Wanting to open a cannabis business is not practical difficulty for a variance. Our response is, this is a moot point. Clay County ordinance only allows six dispensaries countywide. With such a strict cap, the idea of a variance flight is not credible. CUP process remains. This amendment does not permit uses by right. Every site still requires a CUP, and every setbacks must still be satisfied or reviewed. Case by case control. If a site cannot meet setbacks, it cannot proceed without a variance. That is already the law. Nothing in this amendment changes that. Staff finding three. Cannabis rules are new. Approving this now may be premature. Our response is, regulatory framework is complete. Minnesota's cannabis laws, chapter three forty-two, and rules are already in effect. Clay County adopted its own cannabis ordinance in June, in June of 2024. This is not premature. Controlled. CUPs allow maximum caution. Each site is vetted individually with tailored conditions at the commission and board level. Planning requires vision. When these rules were first written, it's likely and, it's unlikely anyone was thinking about agricultural service centers, grain elevators, or adaptive reuses. But the duty of planners is not just to enforce rules, it's also to think outside the box so we can reach more creative, forward-looking decisions. Sometimes, taking a chance is worth it. With a time-sensitive opportunity like this, waiting too long means the window could close, and rural ASC towns will never get their chance. Staff finding four. ASC districts are overwhelmingly rural residential. Allowing industrial, commercial uses could create conflicts with nearby homes. Our response is, there's a history of blight. ASC towns are residential today only because their commercial base collapsed for lack of opportunity. They were, they were designed for mixed use, but businesses left. No development for decades. ASC towns have seen no meaningful new development in decades. Without opportunity, blight persists, and rural town sites decline further. Cannabis is the most viable economic driver. Of all the economic opportunities available today, cannabis is by far the most lucrative and time-sensitive. Other industries are not lining up to invest in ASC towns. Restoration funding. The revenue from cannabis businesses provides the capital needed to repair and restore aging structures like elevators, community halls, and service buildings. Without this, those buildings will continue to deteriorate and eventually be lost. Restoring balance. This amendment revives the original service center purpose of ASC districts carefully through CUPs, and provides a path for viable small scale, small-scale economic uses. Staff finding five. Cannabis businesses will not generate sales tax revenue for the county. Sales tax clarification. Our response. Cannabis transaction, transactions are subject to Minnesota's general sales tax and applicable local sales taxes. Clay County and its towns benefit indirectly where local sales taxes apply. Excise tax. It is true that the cannabis excise tax goes to the state general fund and not directly to the counties. Other local benefits. Increased property tax based from restored and improved sites, construction permits and inspection fees, jobs in construction, retail, and support services, tourism and local spending from visitors, and the avoided county costs are such as hundreds of thousands of dollars to demolish abandoned structures like the Baker elevator if left to rot. Staff finding six. Cannabis may burden public facilities, utilities, and create new nuisances. Our response is heavily, this is a heavily regulated industry. Cannabis is among the most tightly regulated industries in Minnesota, requiring security, odor control, waste plants, and inspections. It has less impact than existing uses. ASC districts already allow bars, restaurants, and entertainment uses by CUP, all of which can produce greater noise, traffic, and late-night activity than a regulated cannabis business. CUP safeguards. Each ASC cannabis CUP can impose conditions on hours, delivery windows, odor control, screening, parking, and lighting to ensure compatibility with nearby residences. Staff finding seven. The comprehensive plan encourages value-added agricultural development, but cannabis may not align. Our response is direct alignment. Cannabis is an agricultural product. Its cultivation and retail are value-added agriculture. Adaptive research, excuse me, adaptive reuse. Repurposing an elevator, an agricultural icon, perfectly embodies the comprehensive, the comprehensive plan's goal of promoting agricultural heritage and rural economic hubs. Plan compliance. Staff's own report noted cannabis in ASC has a potential to stimulate economic activity, tourism, and preservation of historic structures such as grain elevators. In closing, I would like to say, at the heart of this request is fairness. Clay County has six agricultural service center towns, yet under the current ordinance, only Highway ten corridor towns are given a real chance to participate in this new state-regulated industry. That creates an unfair monopoly for one part of the county while excluding the rest. Staff expressed concern that ASC districts are now overwhelmingly residential, but that happened only because the businesses that once thrived there were forced out by lack of opportunity. These ASC towns are in blight. There has not been meaningful new development in decades. Of all the economic opportunities available today, cannabis is by far the most lucrative. It is one of, the only industries capable of generating the level of investment required to repair and restore historic structures before they are gone forever. This amendment is about restoring ASC towns to their original purpose, bringing back economic viability, and preventing further decline. It does not grant approvals by right. It simply gives ASC towns the same opportunity to be considered under a conditional use permit, all, with all of the safeguards, setbacks, and state regulations already in place. Approving this amendment supports countywide fairness, preserves, preserves a historic landmark that otherwise could not, could have cost the county hundreds of thousands to demolish, strengthens rural economies, and upholds the vision of the comprehensive plan. And most importantly, it allows the Planning Commission and the county board to think outside the box, to take a creative chance where it matters most, before the opportunity is gone. This is an opportunity to choose equity, economic responsibility, and community preservation for all of Clay County, not just a select corridor.
Thank you. Did you care to comment?
Yeah.
Just state your name, please.
Derek Drager. I'd be the general manager and minority owner. I think, I, I grew up in small towns, right? Not in Clay County, but that's where I spent most of my time. And far and away, pretty much every small town you go to, what you see is the same four or five different businesses, right? You know, you've got your car repairs, you've got your realtor, one, maybe two in some of these small towns. You've got maybe a dealership slash used car dealer, and then you've got a local gas station and a coffee shop, right? Like, that's generally what you see. And the, the meaningful reason for that is that outside of that, there's really nothing that can work, right? There's nothing drawing people to these small towns. And being someone from a small town, I, I spent a lot of my school age years here and a lot of my formula of years in, in the Fargo-Moorhead area, but I've recently moved back out to Barnesville. And just talking with my daughter the other day, she lives right on the edge of West Fargo, and her and her friends like going out in the diversion and going out in the rural areas and hanging out and having fun. And seeing the look on her face when she brought those items to me and said, hey, this is what I like doing out in this area. These are some fun things that me and my friends do. It brought back all those memories of being from a small town and all the things that, that, that I did as a kid, and that a lot of us in this area have done, right? And this gives a chance to save those communities, to save some of those towns and save some of those values and those experiences for future kids and future generations. You know, we're, we're a business, right? And, and we're trying to create an opportunity for our business, but we're also trying to create a path forward for other businesses. There's other places in the state that have looked at co-op-ing and, and creating their own dispensaries or their own retail businesses. We're trying to create a model and creating, trying to create an opportunity. So, really, that's what this comes down to. I know a lot of this legislation was done at a state level, and those people don't, they don't understand, right? And so, we could be a beacon forward. We could be an example, and you guys have an opportunity to be an example for the rest of the state of what rural Minnesota can really be, because I think it's worth saying.
Thank you. All right. Maybe if, if you're done with your comments, unless there's questions by the board, we'll see if we have any other comments. So, if you want to just take a chair and? Thank you. Do we have anybody else who cares to speak? Sure. Come, yeah. Make sure you state your name.
Gerald Buttonoff, Alliance Township Supervisor. I don't know, I, we were quoted as saying we would sell land, and I don't believe we can as a township. I, I don't know what the codes are or anything, but if they need to expand their footprint, they don't have enough land. But that's just one of the things I was here for. I don't know, I don't know if you could help give us guidance or what? We've got easements in town, but I don't know that we can sell any of it. And I don't know that we'd want to. I, I don't know what the process is.
Matt, you?
Go through this.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Mr. Buttonoff, one thing I can say is that, just give an example. In Downer, there was a business that also was looking to be established and to meet their minimum requirements. There was some township right-of-way, and that was essentially never developed, and so it was township property. And they went through the process of vacating that, that right-of-way and, and selling it to, or selling it to, to that landowner. So, I know there is a process for, for right-of-way. That's not, not in use. As far as property, that would probably be an attorney question, that Minnesota Association of Townships.
But otherwise, as far as their project goes, I've, I've had one concerned citizen that called me, and they were definitely against it. That is the only citizen that contacted me. They were, they were basically afraid of the unknown. If they have a lounge, I mean, impaired drivers on the road, because there's nowhere, I mean, he's got a place to stay, but how many people are going to be at his business? Other than that, we haven't had, I haven't had any comments from any, any of the neighbors right in Baker. So, I guess that's all, all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm Tim Thompson, and I was a skeptic when the elevator first got purchased by Mr. Doms and, and was being repurposed. And I, I think one thing that you're not seeing from here is what's been done inside of there from an abandoned vandalized building. Encourage some of you to take a look at, at what has been done in, in his first stages of what's going on there, what he's done. Otherwise, it's, it's rats, it's pigeons, it's stray cats. And I live right across the field from it. I'm not as close as some of the other neighbors, but he's done something that I didn't think possible. So, I, I think it's, if some of you get a chance to actually go look at the structure, you can kind of see and understand where he's coming from as, as far as his business proposals and stuff. You know, there are some concerns out there, but I haven't seen a lot of opposition. And but the, the land issue, there are some things there. There's a piece of property in there that's kind of undefined as to ownership. And like Jerry was saying, how, how do property things take place, being near a railroad right-of-way? It had elevator structures on it and still has two bins on, but I don't know how the ownership of that particular parcel is, has or can be determined. And, and if that would be part of it, there may be something that, that the township can, can work out there. I'm certainly not for or against what he's doing, but he's done some work in our church, exceptional quality, and, and pleased with what he's, he's done as far as craftsmanship and intent. He did what I would consider impossible inside of there. So, I'm not, I, I don't think the risk is there. I mean, and you do control through your, what am I trying to say? Your CUP stuff here, how things go, and if there's violations or stuff. I think you still take control over it. You're not sacrificing anything. So, it may be worth a look to go onsite, see what's been done with it, with what he's got now. And it's a unique structure, and everybody's waiting for it to fall. It never will, but, you know, it, it's leaned since, since the day it was rebuilt. And then, they cut it in half, and it leans more. So, to take, when you talk about iconic, it is, it is unique, because, but I'd encourage you to at least is, take a look and, and see what's been done. If some of you have that opportunity, I think it would give you a perspective on what his, his capabilities and intents are. The only other person that was looking at it was somebody, when he bought it, that wanted to put a metal scrapyard in there. And we've got property that abuts it, and that is not really the, the kind of thing you want to expand in this small town. So, what he's done is improved a disaster there, and, and I think it could be done again with, with support and, and that type of stuff. I won't be a customer there. It's not my thing, but, you know, you guys can manage the risks if it is something that's looked at. But I, I don't see where it can really harm any of these small towns to, to take a look at some of those things. You can't, when you put together stuff from the state, you can't look at every nuance. And that's why I appreciate the fact that the boards and planning commissions can And that's why I appreciate the fact that the boards and planning commissions can get out and take detailed looks to find out if there are exceptions to rules and how to manage it. And I encourage you to take a little bit deeper look and wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, Tim. Question on the business plan that would...this cannabis operation would have...would this basically be a retail operation?
Yeah. My understanding is for this specific business, it's a microbusiness, so it would be retail and...correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Doms, the cultivation endorsement as well?
Yeah, do you want me to...
Yeah, if you could. And I guess I'd like an answer on the potential for a lounge type of a situation. If you could comment on that, please.
So with my preliminary approval from the Office of Cannabis Management, I'm allowed a retail area to sell cannabis products. I'm allowed to serve low dosage edibles. So what that basically is, is if you...like, you go into junkyard or whatever, you can buy an infused beverage, and that's it. There's no smoking or anything onsite. I'm allowed cultivation. I'm allowed processing. I can wholesale to other people. I can transport, so we can do delivery service. We can transport. We essentially have a very wide range of doing stuff. In terms of what the lounge was, is we were...one of the ideas with our business plan is we wanted to create a lounge so that we could celebrate the uniqueness of the elevator. And we would clean up the outside and allow it to have, on the north side, an area where we could have people come and play guitar or whatever, people could hang out and listen. There's a...the lounge is actually...there's a growing...well, the lounge is actually what it's for is it's non-alcoholic, so it's only can be infused beverages. So we're essentially getting away from the alcohol thing, and it's pretty hot on the coast right now from east and west coast that these things are kind of going up. So we would be pretty revolutionary in our...in the middle of the country right now, so... But to answer the lounge thing, we are...we have very strict guidelines in terms of hours we can be open. It's only like nine, nine in the morning till nine at night. On Sunday, it's a little bit different, a little bit more condensed.
Are those hours based on your license that you got from the state?
Yes.
That has nothing to do with what could be a condition that could be put on?
No, I believe that's a state.
Local planning, okay.
I believe that, because we've looked at other counties as well, and it's pretty consistent. It's consistent throughout there. So we are heavily regulated. We're...I mean, we're huge in compliance. I have to hire a firm. I'm hiring a firm out of New York that will just deal with compliance, because it's so heavily...and then if, you know, if you mess up, you're just out. And we're talking...I mean, our plan invests a million dollars into that elevator once we...in order to cultivate in it, and we're cultivating. We have to build levels, and we have lights, and, I mean, it's just a lot of stuff that really makes your head hurt, but it's highly regulated.
Okay. I think that answers my question on that particular thing, but...
Yeah. Mr. Chair, the hours too are set in statute, so we follow what's in statute essentially for hours.
So what's in statute? And again, I'm not suggesting that that would be the case, but I'm just from a knowledge standpoint, does the county have the ability to be more restrictive than what the state statute is?
Potentially, but my recommendation for...again, for the...what's in our ordinance is we also have hours in our ordinance, and they match the states.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I think I saw Commissioner Crabbe's hand up first, though.
Yeah, thank you. And again, we're talking about zoning here, but if I want to ask a couple of questions about maybe the couple of things he talked about, the type of operation?
Sure. I mean...
Okay. So anyway, can we go back to retail?
You get real close to your mic.
Yeah, sorry. Can we talk about your retail piece? Again, what's that involved with?
Yes. So retail can pretty much kind of be...well, retail is the sale of a product with THC in it. And those can vary from what's called flour, which is the actual plant, edibles, which can be gummies, candies, all kinds of stuff. I mean, they make rib rub mixes that have cannabis in it, so you can rub your ribs down with it. Topicals in terms of lotions and stuff for people with arthritis and stuff. Stuff for pets. It's very, very wide. We don't...we want to have a very select market. We want to have what's called more of a boutique feel to us, which means we're going to have really high-grade stuff. We're not looking at capturing a clientele that's looking for the cheapest stuff. We're looking to capture that clientele that wants to have an experience and wants to see the elevator, wants to participate in getting good quality product. So we have some very high expectations of what our branding needs to be.
Okay. And the next two pieces are...just to get some clarity on this. So let's talk about cultivation, and let's talk about wholesale use. So with that, and with this facility, would your product be all grown inside, or would you be having some outside? I think you can have a...I know it's a lot of due ancients or whatever the case, but would this be indoors?
Yes. So everything's indoors. And essentially, what it is, is if you picture the grain elevator, grain elevators are big vertical shafts. And that particular one in Baker, they're 70 feet tall. And we would build floors in there. And each floor there, what you do is when you cultivate, the way we're going to do it, is you have tents. You have essentially a four-by-eight-by-seven-foot tent. And the plants are in there. It's fully climate-controlled. The plants are very sensitive to all kinds of stuff. And losing a crop is going to be a lot of money. So when you cultivate, essentially what happens is we would build that stuff up there. We would build our facility out, and then we...it takes essentially six months to go from what's called seed to sale. And with the Office of Cannabis Management, every seed has a number on it, and everything is numbered through a system called metrics. So there's no room for error. Everything is just...is very strict. But by the...so what I'm allowed to do to cultivate, I'm allowed to cultivate 5,000 square feet of canopy, which is canopy of a plant, or the equivalent of 3,000 pounds of cannabis a year. At a very conservative estimate, a cannabis...pound of cannabis flour is roughly $1,500. So you do that math, and it's a lot of money. It is an all-cash business, because cannabis is still illegal at the federal level, but we've partnered with state banks, and we have everything, and we're 100% on board with being compliant with everything, because this is...it's a huge investment.
Last, let's go real quick to wholesaling.
Yes. So we are allowed to with that. So when...if...once we cultivate and get everything in there, we are allowed to do many things. One, we can take that flower and sell it in our shop. Two, we can take that flower and sell it to dispensary A or dispensary wherever in the state we can. We just can't cross county or...excuse me, we can't cross state lines. It's a state-regulated thing. We're allowed to process it, which means we can break it down and put it into gummies or lotions or pet food or whatnot. So we really have the kind of a sky's-the-limit opportunity. And as this becomes more the norm, the cannabis is across the country, there are more technologies, and it's being infused in more things, and it's being used for more health reasons and whatnot.
Well, thank you for that. I just want a general overview, not only for me, but for the public.
Yeah, absolutely.
And obviously, we know that the CUPs, you know, are...have stricter...or, excuse me, the guardrails around your operation, so...okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Right. Any other questions? Matt, the...first of all, I do want to comment on the ASCs. When we went through the Clay County Land Development Subdivision Ordinance, all of those ASCs had an opportunity to comment on those ordinances. Is that correct?
Correct. Yep. Township level, essentially.
That would have went through the township level.
Yep.
Okay. That would have counted through the township. Okay. All right.
We also had pretty substantial insight and participation with them in those meetings.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah. So can you tell me again, Matt, where...when this was established, where they currently are allowed...where the cannabis businesses are allowed in Clay County?
Yeah, the...
Is it highway commercial?
Highway commercial and limited highway commercial. Mr. Doms is correct. Most of our highway commercial and limited highway commercial is along Highway 10, but then also Highway 75 as well. At this property, say, specifically this property, if is able to meet the minimum lot dimensional standards for a highway commercial, limited highway commercial, it could potentially apply for rezoning at some point, too.
They do not meet that?
No, not at this time. Yep. As far as the Egg Service Center zoning district, you know, in the planning commission, we kind of did discuss, you know, reasons for potentially approving this amendment and reasons for denying this amendment. And I think Mr. Doms did a really nice job of explaining and walking through here and bringing some new information to the county board on some reasons for...that would support that approval as well. So those are definitely things to consider.
So in terms of this particular site, why would it not qualify for just being rezoned to highway commercial? Is it just too small?
Yeah. It's just a...it's about a half-acre property. Our minimum is an acre. There's also road setbacks, adjacent residence setbacks for the use that could be resolved through a variance process. I think it's the minimum lot size that's kind of the main reason. And, you know, with minimum lots, I think one of the things that...the reasons why we have a minimum lot size is to ensure that there's adequate space for parking, adequate space for sewage, and septic and things of that nature.
Did you have another?
Just real quick, back to Jerry. Tim, what is that amount of land that's around there? Maybe you know that.
I can bring it up on a map if that...
I'm just curious. And so then, what I'm curious about, and I get it on parking and all that, you know, we go through all that with CUP, but to answer Commissioner Campbell's question, is there a specific acreage?
A minimum?
Yeah.
One acre.
It is one acre. Okay.
Just to clarify something, Matt. Is it one acre to be a highway commercial or one acre to be able to put this type of facility on?
For commercial or industrial use. Yep.
I guess I was looking for a way to maybe not have to redo our entire ordinance that we just did and see if we could make this fit within something like highway commercial, but...
And well, Mr. Chair, I think if you were to approve this today, the amendment is not very...it's pretty simple. It's a pretty simple change. It's just basically adding in our use table, adding a C to our conditional use under our agricultural service center column. Still be subject to the same...
It'd still be subject to a conditional use permit.
Yep. Still be subject to a conditional use permit. Yep. So...
That goes to the comments that were made by, I believe, was Tim, that...
Yep, and Mr. Doms, too.
And Ms. Doms. You could still have the ability to...
To look at sites.
Review each applicant on its own and determine...
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So there is still public input through that process, too?
Correct.
On an individual?
And oftentimes, in the conditional use permit processes, where you'll see more that public input come into play or come out as well.
Just one comment.
Yes. Commissioner Bear.
This isn't looking at just the Baker facility. This is looking at all six of the sites, and there's 22 properties that potentially could have one of these.
Yeah. And yeah. And I guess I...I guess going back to my previous comments, those other 22 sites, through the process and the development of this ordinance, they all had input. As Commissioner Mojo mentioned, they did have input into this ordinance, and they didn't really stress one way or another, probably. I mean, this is fairly new, obviously, so...but so is our ordinance. You know, so I was just, from that standpoint, you know, I mean, we are opening it up to additional 22 of these potential. But again, they'd all still be required to have the conditional use, which is...I like that approach, because then you are dealing with...you can get down to what that individual applicant is going to do and what the public might have concerns about. The findings of fact are still involved with that, aren't they?
Correct. There's review criteria. Yep. For a conditional use permit.
Yes, Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. You know, I think it's important to clarify, just for folks of the public watching. You know, we keep talking about these being...these ASCs being towns. These are really villages. So, you know, they're not incorporated towns with city councils. They're villages in rural Clay County. And so I think that's an important component, just to clarify for people that might be watching.
Any other comments? Any other public comments? Is the board ready to close this hearing?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Bear, second by Commissioner Ebinger, to close the hearing. Any further discussion on that motion? Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same sign. The hearing is closed. And based on this applicant, we do have a time period where we do need to act, right? From a...now that the hearing is closed...
Correct.
Any other response within this period of time, right? I don't know if the board's ready today to...
Yes, Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. Just since I serve in the capacity of Planning Commission, I thought it might be helpful just to provide that. Obviously, in the packet, you see what the recommendation for the Planning Commission was. You know, I really felt like there was some really good points that were brought up. I really, you know, I've said this before to the applicant. I appreciate folks that are trying to creatively look at how to invest in Clay County, particularly with businesses. It's a challenging business climate in Minnesota sometimes to navigate, so I do appreciate that. You know, and I will say that because this is in my district, I've made an intentional outreach to folks in the townships and the other townships that would be affected as well. There's some serious concern about, you know, changing the use across all of the service establishes, certainly. Their perspective was that they had said that they...partly why they haven't participated as much at this point is they felt that they really went on record with us on the crafting of the ordinance and where things would be allowed, and really encouraged us to allow that. and where things would be allowed, and really encouraged us to allow that to work through the process. Certainly, it's young, and you talked about this, we've only just permitted a couple of those. So allowing those ordinances to work through as we crafted them. And then, too, you know, I think it is important to say that it is challenging. We're seeing a time where rural development and businesses is changing. What those vibrant grain elevators used to be, it is changing. I think the status of all of those areas changed. But what makes the most sense, you know, I've always tried to look at this as more of a not so much spot zoning or making big spot changes. And this does concern me, just in regards to what the effects are to all of rural Clay County and services, too. But I've also gone on record here about saying, how do we be more flexible to allow with businesses? So, you know, I think that I'm probably more torn with this application than I've been in others in the past. I think there are opportunities and benefits, but I do feel like there are some challenges in us doing a blanket-wide change to what is allowed in the service center. You know, I think maybe looking at a reclassification for a limited highway commercial would make more sense personally, but I'm willing to see where the board stands.
Well, that was, your very last comment was where I was hoping we could have gone with this, because to me, it would have made the most sense. But just based on what I'm hearing, it would not qualify as just a highway commercial because it doesn't meet the size requirements. And I don't know that we want to start getting into changing the size of our highway commercial because of size. So that's a dilemma in itself, which would be, I think, difficult to overcome. I, you know, I agree, and again, I agree that there was a lot of input on this. Ultimately, for me, it boils down to what is the public's ability when something new is about to happen in their area? And that's through a conditional use process that still allows, and everybody needs to be notified when there is an application for a conditional use permit. All the neighboring properties need to be notified, and they all have the opportunity at that time. And it takes it to that, more of that local issue, as opposed to doing this. You know, there's no guarantee, just the fact that we're allowing an additional 22 properties, there's no guarantee that through the conditional use process, they're still going to get that, you know, that permit.
Correct.
So it seems to me it is taking it down to that local level. You might have townships that might speak on a different one of these 22 parcels on behalf of these, you know, rural areas, and they might have a total different opinion as opposed to maybe being pro or con, you know, or even neutral. But I think it's, this is an opportunity. I think that, I do have concern about the lounge issue. That's why I asked that question. I do have that concern. And again, I think those concerns and those concerns that somebody might have as a resident can raise those in the conditional use permit process. So, but for those who think that cannabis isn't the business that's here to stay, I think, you know, I think we all know better than that right now. Commissioner Ebinger.
Yeah, I've been quietly listening to this because it's a guy my age, three of us qualify as boomers. I didn't really ever think that we'd come to, as a governmental body, to have to make these decisions, because I didn't think it ever would be fully legalized. It has been, and it's here. And my opinion of this has changed, and I'll give Mr. Doms credit for it. This sounds like a thoughtful, well-planned-out business model, and I'm assuming he's got the financial capacity to come in and make this happen. And I think as county commissioners, when we have somebody who's willing to come in and stake their fortune and their energies on something, and it sounds like it's been thought through, and it sounds like he's using resources that can add to the potential of success, I'd hate to stifle that.
Yes, Commissioner Bear. Sorry, but one thing, Ebinger's point is, he still would have to go through a CUP if this does get changed.
That's right.
Just to clarify that.
But this is the next step?
This is the first step for him to go after that CUP.
Correct.
To clarify that. Now I'll give the floor over.
Yeah, I mean, I'll add to that. I mean, you know, absolutely, the CUP is there. And then, by doing this, it doesn't guarantee, so he gets to do it. That'll be decided on the CUP. But the one word he said that hit me the most was fairness. And I do believe that done in the right way, I think by opening up egg centers, I think is prudent. And I think we have our opportunity to have input along these decisions all the way. But, yeah, I had two emails, I guess, against, and they were by local people. And it was about what their community was, and how quiet it is, and all that. But I think he reminded me, as growing up in that area, being a farmer, these were, you know, these were commercial places in their first intent. And a revitalization of that, I think, in my view, is healthy. Maybe I don't, maybe I wish it was something else other than cannabis, but that's the new. And I'm open to that. So I think that, you know, I would support this, I guess, just for the fact of fairness and opportunity to others.
You know, an area that we haven't touched on a little bit, but I think in a roundabout way, it was through the question about lounge, and that goes to onsite consumption and that type of thing, and then getting behind the wheel. You know, there's always that concern, but I also think back to several years ago, another potato warehouse that was converted to a bar and a restaurant. And that has been a thriving business today in that certain area. And, you know, I don't know, maybe, I haven't heard from the sheriff, but I don't know if there is an awful lot of issues that go on there, but they, you know, those people who are in that business still have responsibilities in terms of how they serve and how much would be served, and, you know, when they allow somebody to leave, so. And again, some of those issues can be discussed. And if there is a concern from law enforcement in a particular application, law enforcement can certainly bring that up through the conditional use process. So, yes.
Just on that point, when anything, any entity is operating with a state-issued license, this, going into cannabis licensing is a little bit of a different world. But alcohol, it's always been, if you create a problem, your license is always on the line. And a good businessman will keep that in mind.
Yep. Commissioner Mojo.
I think it's important, though, to note that that establishment in Downer is in highway commercial.
Yeah, it is, yes. Yes, Commissioner Bear. We had a gentleman here for citizens to be heard, and he's talking about our budget and how we are looking at raising our property taxes. To bring economic development into greater Clay County, which this would, would help bring down our property taxes as a whole by developing properties like this. That's one of the reasons why I'm in favor of this.
Well, I think I heard him say that he's going to do a million-dollar renovation to that building. And I'm assuming you know that, along with that renovation, that to that number, it also increases your value of that property. And we all know what happens when you have increased valuation of your property. There's more tax revenue.
Tax revenue.
That's one way to bring down the tax.
That's right. All right, do we have any further discussion? Or would the board care to act on this today?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the petition for a text amendment to the Clay County Land Development and Subdivision Ordinance based on, period.
All right, and I believe you had language in there for that, right?
You want the last part?
Yes.
Following facts and finding, I guess, from the Planning Commission?
So, excuse me, Mr. Chair.
So we do have a motion, and we can't have discussion until there's a second.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Kravenoff, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Okay, now, Matt, you can-
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, yeah, these were the findings that were presented to, or recommendations presented based on the findings of fact for approval, being that the use has the potential to revitalize and diversify egg service center economies. The use could be considered similar to other conditional uses permitted in the egg service center, e.g., bar, restaurant, commercial entertainment, regarding business-type traffic-generated noise, lighting, parking. And then, that adaptive reuse of structures has the potential to stimulate economic activity, promote tourism, preserve structures that contribute to the rural character of Clay County. And I don't know if these are, kind of, if these all capture kind of what your discussions are, if there's anything that you would want to add to that.
No, my motion fits well with the findings of fact.
All right, so within your motion, where those-
Yeah.
Findings of fact. Meet your second. All right. Any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion? Sarah, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Kravenhoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo?
No.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Bear?
Yes.
Commissioner Ebinger?
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, we will, you'll go through that process then, right? And the applicant here, then, will move into the conditional use process moving forward.
Just one question.
Yes.
Yes. Now, with our new website, is it already changed?
No, not yet.
Not yet?
Will be.
All right, that takes care of that subject. We will then, do you need a break? Okay, I guess we're running late, so we're going to take a five-minute break. There we go. All right, we are back in session. Our next item is a request approval to appoint Planning Commission member to the Moorehead Wellid Protection Plan. We, you did notice that in your packet, that the request is to appoint Joel Hildenbrandt as the Clay County Planning Commission member to the Moorehead Wellid Protection Plan team. Do we need to have any further, I think we're aware of what that is, and I don't know if there's any, if we have to spend a whole lot of time going through that, but-
No, just basically, it's going to be a six-month process. They're looking at starting in November of '25, meeting once a month. And they had also made a request to have Commissioner serve on that as well. And I know that, understand that that is in your commission portfolio, so.
Yep, so that'll, yeah, we'll keep that, and Commissioner Bear will be my alternative.
Okay.
But we do need to have the approval for-
Yep, just looking for a motion to appoint Joel.
I'll make that a motion to appoint Joel Hildenbrandt to the Moorehead Wellid Protection Team.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Bear, second by Commissioner Kravenoff. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right.
Thank you.
Sorry to make you guys sit here for two hours while- All right, so you'll put out notices then, when we're ready to meet? Sounds good.
Can you put me on that to email this, too, just so I know?
Yeah, I can provide.
All right, next we have Justin, got a few things for us this morning. Item number seven, request approval to acquire highway easement for parcel 21360200.
Yes, good morning. So the first item I have is permission to acquire the highway easement. So this is one of two easements needed for the CASA 12 and 52 Roundabout. This has been one that we've been working on for a long time. And through the negotiation phase, we were able to settle with the landowner on a cost of $22,000, and this is budgeted in 2025.
All right. What's the board's wishes?
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement to acquire highway easement in the amount of $22,000.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Kravenoff, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion?
Just to clarify for parcel number 21.036.0200.
That's correct. All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carried. All right, next we have request approval, acquire easement for parcel 19.001.0100.
Yes, so this is the second highway easement needed for the CASA 12 and 52 Roundabout. This is also budgeted through the 2025 budget, and this purchase would be for $40,000. And if this is approved, this would, this is kind of the last thing needed for this project, and then we can submit to both federal aid and state aid. Plans are at 100% now, so we're sitting well ahead of schedule and definitely in line for an early bid date and hopefully some good pricing.
One question?
Yes.
This project we plan on doing next year.
Correct. And one of the, obviously, right-of-way is one of the biggest hurdles, but then the second biggest hurdle on a federal project is the environmental doc. And that was approved three weeks ago.
With that, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve agreement to acquire highway easement in the amount of $40,000 for parcel number 19.001.0100.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Bear. We have a second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? None, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carried. All right, next. Request approval for limited use permit and supporting resolution.
Yes, so the art trail which runs from Yulin north, five miles to the Clay-Norman line, is sponsored by Clay County. So it's kind of one of Mindot's internal processes, is they kind of review these trails from time to time. And they did notice that part of this trail intersects the trunk Highway 32 right-of-way, thus creating the need for a limited use permit and supporting resolution. This is pretty standard. This is something that we do for snowmobile trails and such, so it's nothing out of the ordinary, and there's no budget implications.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the limited use permit on resolution 2025-26.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bear, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion on the motion?
I just want to make one comment. It's a very nice trail to ride side-by-sides or four with its downs. It gets used quite a bit.
Definitely.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carried. All right, we'll next move right in then.
Thank you.
Justin, we have highway tracking. Hopefully, we'll get to that soon. All right, next we have a request approval to sunset the Clay County Referral Incentive Program. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I'm here this morning to discuss sunsetting the Clay County Referral Incentive Program. In 2022, the board adopted the program for recruiting and retention efforts. I would say the program has been pretty successful. We've paid out just over, or just shy of $68,000 to date. With the upcoming budget concerns, and now that we are receiving more and more applications for our job postings, we believe it is appropriate to sunset this program at this time. I would ask that with sunsetting the program, it doesn't impact any current pending payments. So if there's someone that is eligible for a payment within the next six months to a year, they would still receive that. To date, we have received 120- To date, we have received 120, or we have had 128 referrals from other employees, which is a breakdown of 69 full-time staff and 59 variable hour. With that, I will pose for any questions?
Do you have a comment?
Okay, I, just one, thank you for providing the historical piece. At the time, we had determined internally that we were spending more money on the advertisement of the open positions and what a referral program would really cost the county. Obviously, like you said, we're seeing applications for positions coming in in a much better way than we've seen in a long time. And then, two, given the feedback we gave you on the, on the budget, I appreciate you coming in to cut something like this. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Ebbinger.
Yeah, I, this did come before pick, and it did pass. It was referred up, up on this. It's been a good program, obviously. The necessity for it is no longer apparent as it was in back, what, three years ago, four years ago? So it's a, it's a good idea to sunset it.
I'll make a motion to sunset the Clay County Referral Incentive Program.
Second, and making sure that it includes payments of all pending.
Yes.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Bear, second by Commissioner Kravenoff. Any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign? Motion carried. All right, next, our request approval to terminate the sick leave donation program.
So I don't have a lot of historical information as when the board adopted this program. I think it's been in place for years and years, but with the implementation of paid family medical leave coming in 2026, there's a recommendation from pick to terminate the sick leave donation program. Right now, the program currently allows staff to request donations from their peers for their unforeseen, sometimes foreseen or unforeseen leave of absences that are unpaid. So we believe that in pretty much every scenario we can think of, that paid family medical leave would cover those unpaid absences. So with that, we would like to terminate that program as well. The one thing with the paid fam, or, excuse me, with the sick leave donation program right now is that the wage is paid out at the recipient's wage, not the donor's wage. So I don't have a ca, I don't know what the exact savings would be, and we don't know how many people would be requesting this on a year-to-year basis anyways. But we do feel that paid family medical leave would cover the necessary scenarios.
All right. And again, that was brought through pick and recommended for to terminate that program.
I think it makes sense, and certainly is a potential money saver. So I'll make a motion to terminate the sick leave donation program for 2026.
I will second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kravenoff, second by Commissioner Bear. Any further discussion?
One thing to clarify, just not for the year 2026. It's going to be implemented in the year 2026.
Correct. Yeah, we know it works, so it's something that we could always potentially bring back in the future, but the termination would be 1-1-2026.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same? Motion carried, and okay, then we have, the next we have a request to allow employees to supplement their paid family medical leave claim with PTO.
Okay, thank you. So this one can sound, or is going to be a little bit more difficult. So we know with paid family medical leave, that employees will receive partial wage replacements ranging from 50% to 90%, depending on their salary. And although we are not allowed to require an individual to use their accrued sick invocation to supplement them to get to 100%, this has gone to pick as well, and we would like to propose allowing the option for employees to use their sick invocation to get them to 100% of their wage replacement if they wish. So if someone submits a claim, it would then be through paid family medical leave, they're on a protected leave of absence. It would then be the employee's choice whether or not they would use, what does, for, I guess, for clean numbers, let's say they're receiving 50% of their wage from the paid family medical leave, we would allow them to use up to 50% of their accruals to bring them to 100%. We know that this would help with the financial aspect as well as benefit premiums. If we do not allow this, many employees, their county contribution does not cover the cost of their premiums, and so we would then have, they would go into arrears, we'd have to set up payment plans, et cetera. So it is a request, and it was vetted through pick to allow employees to use their accrued PTO to supplement their claims.
One, one question.
Commissioner Bear?
With us negotiating with our unions this year, did any of them ask for this?
I would have to defer to Darren on that. I don't sit in on the negotiations.
There was nothing that I can recall that they asked for this requirement. We did have some that asked for the county to pay 100% of the paid family medical leave tax that goes into effect, but we've pushed back on that. But this particular thing, I can't remember any of the unions requesting that.
Keep in mind, we do still have several employees who aren't involved with any bargaining unit as well.
Yep, no. I think this is a good idea.
Yeah. Okay. Yes, Commissioner, Commissioner Ebbinger.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to allow employees to supplement their paid family medical leave claims with their PTO.
All right.
I will second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Ebbinger, second by Commissioner Bear, and this, again, was also recommended through pick as well, so. With that, any further, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same? Motion carried. And next we have request approval to add Medica Essentia option to the 2026 benefit plan.
Thank you. So when I was here, probably four to six weeks ago, with the proposal of moving from Blue Cross Blue Shield to Medica, at that time, I presented the Medica Passport Plan. So the Medica Passport Plan mirrors Blue Cross almost identically. And so since then, we have obtained additional information from Medica, and they are, I'm here to present an additional network that would be called Medica Essentia. And although this is an option, this would have, be an additional narrow network plan where members would receive care exclusively at Essentia. Their deductible, everything of that nature would remain as is. However, the premium is significantly lower. By offering the Essentia only option, there is a financial advantage to both Clay County and the employees. From the employee aspect, the premium would be lower. From the employer aspect, the cost of claims that are processed would be at approximately a 20% deduction. So if you break your arm, I need to back up just a second. So without this option, employees can choose to go wherever they wish. With this option, if employees pick the Essentia network, they are restricted to Essentia. So they cannot go to Sanford, they cannot go to Mayo unless they are referred out, and the, the chance of a referral is going to be pretty minimal unless Essentia cannot do the service. So speaking to the benefit to the county, if an individual is on the Essentia only network and they seek services at Essentia, the cost of their claim would be 20% less than as, as if they were to go to Essentia on that open access network. So speaking to that, that broken arm, if you have a broken arm on your own the Essentia passport, it may cost you $100. We know that's really little, but if you were on the Essentia only, it would be at a 20% discount. The re, this partnership between Medica and Essentia has been in place for nearly 10 years, and it continues to perform very well. The, we don't know the exact savings, because one, we don't know how many employees would choose this option, and two, the claim, the number of claims may be the exact same, but offering this, some of those claims we know would be at a reduced cost. So this was discussed at the insurance committee, and was unanimously, unanimously suggested from, or recommended, excuse me, from the insurance committee. We also talked about it at the subcommittee level as well.
We had quite a discussion in this, the subcommittee. And I, I expressed real concerns at first, and it was partially because of the, and I even did it within the full insurance committee when we first talked about this, when it was, it basically was passed to do the passport only. And then I, later it was then brought back to the insurance committee through, I think you did a, some sort of a poll, right?
Correct, I did.
But any, my, my concern was, and, and again, this was before we had additional information from the broker about the reduction in actual cost of a procedure. Because my concern was, is without that, if we, if the, if the proceeds were the same, and we were having less premiums paid, that would ultimately, right of way, just lead to a guaranteed increase for everybody else. And so we, we were assured then that if somebody chose the essential only, and I look at, I look at that as another plan option for them, similar to, they have their choice of a CM1000, or you can go all the way up to high deductible plan. This is another plan option within that, as far as, that's how I look at it.
Okay.
And, and again, I guess that, that alleviated some of my concern when I knew that there would be less premiums paid, but also less claims going against it to offset that. And it does allow somebody, maybe who's looking for family coverage, to maybe be able to get their full family coverage paid through the cafeteria plan. I, I also, and you brought it up, but I, I think we need to caution everybody who chooses that, that somewhere down the road, if, if they wanted Mayo, or some outside, or U of M, or whatever, to go to, if it's not, if it's not referred by Essentia, and they offer that service through Essentia, they're out of luck.
Correct.
So I think that's something that everybody needs to be aware of when they, if they were to choose that particular option.
Yeah, the member is definitely taking somewhat of a risk. If they pick the essential only network, they can't go wherever they wish anymore.
And is the, one last, is the out-of-network different?
I don't have that in front of me. Typically, it's double what the in-network amount is.
But I mean, the, the Essentia only, I mean, if somebody is out of state, they're out of network.
Sure. So in that case, there, if they seek services, if they're, I don't want to speak incorrectly here, so I can always, I can certainly get, and I will gather more information. Typically, if like they're in Florida and something happens, if they seek services through an ER, and it's true, or urgent care, and it's truly an emergency, then it's considered in-network. But I can't speak to that specifically for the Essentia only network, so I'll get more information.
Well, I mean, it, that's, I mean, it's something that the, those who choose that will have to ask those questions.
Absolutely.
Guessing that they will.
I haven't seen all of those plan designs, just since it hasn't been approved yet, so.
All right. Mr. Kravenoff?
Yeah, the only thing I'll add, you explained it all very well, is, you know, this came, this option kind of came as a recommendation from Medica. And so I, I feel also that by offering it, in as long as it works out well for those that choose it, it also puts, puts us in a better position of, when it comes to renewing, that we, we were following their suggest, suggestion. So perhaps it might, there might be further benefit down the road.
All right. So there's a recommendation to add the Essentia only option to the 2026 benefit plan.
I'll make the motion to add the Medica Essentia option to the 2026 benefit plans.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kravenoff, second by Commissioner Mojo. Any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign? Motion carried. All right, Anna?
Thank you all.
Takes care of your items? All right, our next item is the 2026 budget discussion, and as Administrator Larson had mentioned, I, I had requested that this item be placed on our agenda every week now till the end of the year. In the event there's anything that the commission cares to bring up, or propose, or to ask additional questions on, that this is the time to do that. And there may be some weeks where we have things, and maybe some weeks that we don't. But it, I think it's, you know, as we had a person in our audience earlier saying, what are we doing about our budget? And we need to do everything that we can, and have those discussions on a weekly basis. So with that, Steve, do you?
Mr. Chair, if maybe I could just start out, thanks for that introduction. I think that if we have, as you mentioned, if we have different items that, that we have forward, to bring forward for your discussion, I will do so. One of the, there's several things this morning that I would like to bring forward. The sheriff notified me at the end of last week. They receive state aid on an annual basis from the state of Minnesota. This year, in 2025, they, they budgeted for $340,000. When they received their allotment this year, we received $482,738. And so, again, a benefit to this year's budget, potentially. But also in talking with Sheriff and Ms. Johnson, based on the information, we had made an adjustment to the state aid from $340,000 in this year's budget to $400,000, but feel comfortable in our ability to move that up to $450,000. That, again, could offset the levy. With the board's actions this morning in adjusting the, the positions in public health to social services, there is a potential savings in the budget of $178,114. And at the end, Mr. Jaeger provided an update that they, that he and I have been speaking about, about license, licenses, fee collection, and would, will look at an increase of $100,000. When you add those three together and make the adjustments, I've been texting with the auditor treasurer, Ms. Lori Johnson, that would, that would make our adjustment of our levy from 6.4 to, 6.46% down to 5.73%.
I didn't, if I may. Can you say to the department, the sheriff again, plain, what was that total?
So the state aid, a dollar amount that we receive from the state was budgeted at $340,000.
Okay.
And we received $482,738 this year. We, the sheriff had already looked to make an increase adjustment, because he had anticipated there might be some increase, but, so he moved that to $400,000, and.
It is. Well, you had 400 in the preliminary.
Correct.
That's right.
And so now we'd be moving to 450.
So 82,000.
So 50.
50.
50,000, yeah.
What happened to the other 32?
Well, you're, you're, the $482,000 is in this year's budget, so that'll be additional revenue this year. That they're trying to be, I guess, from the standpoint of, of the uncertainty, they're, the sheriff and the auditor not suggesting that we move all the way to 482 for next year, but rather 400 to 450.
My, my question to that is, so it's $142,000 more we receive for this year, from this year's budget?
That's correct.
Where does that money go?
That would be up to the board, but it would go into the general fund, most likely, yeah.
It'd go into, it, yeah, go into reserves, right?
Reserve, yeah.
Into the reserves.
Revenue is over expenditure.
Revenue is over expenditure. And so, and, and again, that's assuming the sheriff meets his budget expectations.
Could we take that money and put it in the, move it into 2026's budget?
As the board, you can, you can choo, you, you can choose to do whatever you'd like.
Buy down the sheriff's budget?
Revenue's over expenditure.
That'd be a recommendation I would make. I'm going to bring down the sheriff's budget by $142,000. If it's money meant to go there, it should go there.
Well.
I'd like to do a session with the sheriff.
Yeah, and I, and I, and again, I think that, I think that would be appropriate, but I, you know, I think at the same point in time, we, we got to just make sure that there aren't some other line items from 2025 that he isn't over on.
Yeah.
That could impact that too, so.
Yeah.
But I think that's, it's a good, it's a good suggestion, and we should reach out to the sheriff and, and see where his year-to-date is, and if he's anticipating needing any of that to offset some other costs. Commissioner Ebbinger?
Yeah, ultimately, and I, I think we're kind of getting into the weeds here. We've got Lori Johnson, we've got department directors like the sheriff, and we've got Steve. And every year, we take money out of reserves and apply it towards bringing down the levy. And I don't want us to get in the habit of picking and choosing now to try and keep the levy down when we can end up just looking at. the levy down when we can end up just looking at the amount of money that's in in reserves and take a portion of that and apply it.
Again, my my argument on that, and I probably will have a little disagreement there, and I ask the question every year, how much of our levy are we levying our taxpayers to put in the bank? And the answer to that question is always zero. We're not, we don't anticipate at the start of the year, we anticipate the start of the year to spend everything that we budget. And so when we have something left over, we should every every right to, as this gentleman in the green shirt, they asked earlier, how do we give some of that back? And this is a way to do that. So
I think we do, but instead of looking at, you look at the at the reserves as a whole, and you take take that out. If we start year marking with each department, I don't know, it's it's going to have the same effect, but it's going to be less coordinated.
Well, when when we do take out of reserves, we're not, we're not, we're not pinpointing any one place. What what we're saying is, okay, if if we if we have a million dollars that we budgeted last year that we needed money for, and we didn't need that money, then offset it in the next budget, but it however that goes, it can it can be spread across all departments. It's not, I don't, I don't want to get into the weeds and nitpick, but I do want to get into the weeds in terms of how we're spending money.
Well, I'm making sure we're looking at each piece, so I think you both are saying the same thing, but it's it's just, you know, the one I'm curious about, Steve, a little bit, is just because we're in transition, the one I'm not so sure about yet, if we, I guess, wait, I'm wanting to know about public health a little more. You know, I really haven't felt I've heard from them or through you about that piece, kind of what efficiencies are we may look at there. Seems, you know, we've heard a lot from social services. Yeah, maybe she's curious.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kravina, I think one of the things that we've talked about in the past is bringing in the new public health director. While I have general knowledge of each department, I'm not going to tell you that I have the in-depth knowledge of 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 public health or any other budget for that matter. And so, again, I think we can continue to to have discussions with the supervisors within public health, but I think that a significant amount of the changes probably wouldn't be happening until it probably
It just seemed like it was maybe the one we just hadn't really talked about was much that, I know we talked to highway and and the other ones, so what other ones are there out there?
And if I can just finish follow-up here, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kravina, one of the things that did, just to just to make a refresher, ensure the public is listening, is that this board did, when we set the preliminary levy, reduce the public health budget by $300,000.
Okay.
And the former former public health director did provide direction and guidance on how she felt that that could be taken care of.
Thank you for that reminder. Okay.
Steve, if I can, if I can, too, while I've got it on my mind, we recently went through the exit interview with the state auditor based on our 2024 audit. And in part of in part of that audit, there was, they talked about our reserves, and there's 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 different components. There's some reserves that include assets other than cash, but there's also the one that just deals with cash.
Right.
And this goes to the question that we we have often, and that's the portion where the state auditor says we should have 50% of our annual expenditures in reserve, which in my 22 years on this board, very rarely did we, were we at 50%. I mean, it has been some times where it's been down as low as in the 30s and then into the into the low 40s. And it seems to me after our 2023 audit, that number had reached 50%. So in other, so in other words, what happened was is we had, we had significant revenues over expenditures that built our reserve up. And so what I would like to, and I know I had asked the auditor to to give the, give the presentation to us on the 24 audit as we did in the in our finance committee. I think it's important for everybody here to see that report, but I would like to see if you could request from them to give a, at least a five-year look back on what our cash balances what were compared to the 50%. And you'll notice that those numbers have been going up. And and again, to me, that's saying we're levying more than we need. And I just, I think it's important for us to see those numbers. So if you can request that, Steve, from the auditor, and again, and can we can, I know when you sent the email out, you said that they would be doing it sometime in the future. Hopefully, we can try to book them before we have to finalize our our levy. So I it's, I think it's important for the full board to see those numbers. All right. Did you, Steve, you have some more? Get any more good news?
That that's the 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 main news that I had for this month. I will note that, as we've talked about before, Darren is going to be pulling a the staff that we have. Generally, for our budget, we pull that in April. The real piece about that is that's a one shot in time. We go ask our department heads to make adjustments throughout that budget. This year, what we're going to do is have Darren just do the same thing that he does in April and to see who our staff are. And we're going to do that early enough to to make sure that we have time to do do the work, but we should be bringing bringing that back with the potential adjustment to the overall cost, the overall cost of our of our staff, which we know is is the highest portion of our budget, so.
Going, well, going with that, should we start looking at a hiring freeze to bring this budget even lower?
I think that, again, as a board, you have the ability to make that decision. I think you you do make that decision every time someone comes before you. If you'd like to formalize that into a into a hiring freeze, I I think the challenge that you would run into is there are specific departments which have which have regulations and licensing requirements, and so I don't know if holistically you could do it, or or if you would want to do it, I guess, holistically do it across the board or look at specific departments.
Could you, could you get that data for us? Which departments are mandated on what we have hired?
Well, I think that, I mean, I think that, you know, your your 24/7 operations are probably your, I mean
The jail, the juvenile center, the
You know, as as from a public safety standpoint, again, if the sheriff loses a deputy, again, that would be up to to this board to determine whether or not they would want to replace that position. You know, I think the other thing that you have to be aware of is, you know, some of our departments are not as large as social services and public health. And so, say, for example, if you if you were, if someone were to leave from the recorders or the assessor's office, there may be times of the day where that window would be closed because we wouldn't have staff to to cover during breaks, lunches, things like that.
Steve, along that line, would it not be more practical just to make the department directors aware when they come forward to get authorization to fill a a a position that's already in their budget, that they come prepared to explain to us why we shouldn't deny that, why it's, at what level it's essential, or if it's if they can make it through the to the end of the year without filling it, to come in and tell us that? And at least get their input or put them in a position where they have to justify filling a position that comes open.
Yeah, I think, I mean, ultimately, that's that's the role that you guys play in making those decisions. I think that you do ask that of your of your department heads right now, and I hope they're providing you a good information on whether or not they should, you should approve that rehiring. I think, you know, to Commissioner Bear's comments, you know, several years ago, we did, we did make a decision to to have a hiring freeze. At that point, it was a hiring freeze essentially from October to December in in hopes of saving saving dollars through the remainder of this budget or that budget, with but with the understanding that the hiring or the interview process could still take place, so they would be hired, they could be onboard by the first of the year. I know that's probably not what you're looking for in this case, you're looking for long longer-term cuts, but but I guess, like I say, I would leave that up to this board to make that decision.
Could next week, could you come with that data on what is the 24/7 and all?
I can do whatever, I can do whatever.
I'd like you to come with that data next week to show us what what departments are mandated we staff them at a certain level. We're going to have this talking point every week, I'd like
Well, there's also the fact, there's a lot of positions.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, we had somebody else, Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, when we'd done this before, part of the conversation is there's there's mandated components, there's the components that are revenue generating, so there is pieces there. You know, I think if I recall, when we'd gone through that hiring freeze, part of the option that we talked about was making sure every request went to PIC. And so that PIC would, PIC had the opportunity to either push it forward or stop it there. I think the challenging piece is there will be, as we've seen with our sheriff's department too, there's times when things come up where it's it's a public safety issue where we have to have those pieces staffed. My recommendation would maybe be understanding that we communicate to the the department heads that we're not interested in additional hiring. We do understand that there are times in which that's needed. And so what if our recommendation going forward would be that any new request would go through PIC? You know, I know we have a mechanism where some do and some don't, but I think that would make the most sense, and then PIC has the ability to sort through the requirements and then move things forward.
You know, and I, and I, and again, I, and I'll get to, I I just want to comment on, and I I think that's a good approach, but one of the, I mean, we're in kind of some unprecedented times, like we were going, I think back to 2008, you know, there's a lot, you know, we're still hearing from the state of Minnesota, you haven't seen anything yet, you know, in terms of what might be coming down on us from them. So I I do, I do think it's appropriate for us to, I I don't want to say just rubber stamp that just because something was in a 2026 budget that we don't do a review of it. And I mean, we've got, we've got significant issues, you know, when you look at all the different public entities asking for money and what that brings on to our taxpayers, we need to pay attention to that. And I'm thinking, as I always talk about the elderly, and in the case of this, you know, with our our farmers, and it is an issue. So I do, I do, I do think that maybe a start on that hiring freeze would 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 basically be, you know, we're not going to, everything has to go through PIC. And I think that's a good start, and I think those who serve on PIC are going to have to really weed out, you know, what's a public safety issue and what, and ask questions, how could, what's the potential in delaying a hire, all of those different things that can come into play. And I am going to go then to Commissioner Abinger and then to Commissioner Kravina.
Yeah, it's not as simple as saying we're not going to hire people. Sure, there's some that are mandated, there's others that are revenue generating.
Right.
There's others that are grant dependent. You can you can lay people off or keep positions open and lose money for the county. We certainly have small staffs. If you've got real estate people and you've got bank people that need to deal with somebody in their recorder's office, and there's nobody there, it can affect the the ability of our our business people to do business, our farmers do to do business with land sales, and it can it can inconvenience people greatly. So I think it's a good idea to run it through PIC and still have the department directors aware that they've got to come in here when they present a request to fill a position and explain to us the financial impact it would have on them or the necessity for the position. Or what I'd love to see is some some come in and say, I think we can make it to the end of the year before we want to consider filling this position, understanding that we're trying to come in under budget where we can. But something as shotgun-patterned as as a freeze, I think we can, we, there's a potential for us to hurt ourselves fiscally there.
I I want to caution us from even bringing up the word layoff because I don't think there's any attention of anybody, and I didn't know that wasn't what you meant by that, but but I don't want to have the interpretation that we're talking about potentially laying off people, because that's not what we're talking about here. What we're talking about is maybe scrutinizing more everything as it becomes available to to look at. So, Mr. Kravina.
Yeah, so that's where I was going with, too. Our job is to manage, and, you know, well, that's what we do. I'm I'm totally against hiring freeze, but I I do appreciate and would strongly support everything going through PEC. And I think Commissioner Abinger kind of stated most of my my thinking also, so I won't repeat, but we're here to manage and we're here to find efficiencies. We have great administration to help us with that, and I trust the system that we're we're doing. And I I know the directors are are certainly aware of what we're trying to all accomplish together, so.
Yeah, and yeah, and I, again, I'm going to, I think, what, let's see, what's our percentage of our budget is payroll, 80%? Probably, yeah, 80%. So, I mean, when we're when we're looking to try to find efficiencies, if we can't look at 80% of our budget, how are we ever going to find deficiencies? And that's, and that's, that's, to me, that's part of my responsibility on behalf of the people that are, you know, paying our taxes to do. And to exclude that, I don't think is appropriate either. So I think this is a good conversation, and I would, I would definitely support, you know, any, everything in 2026 moving forward with any openings, that it would be go through PIC, and I would even suggest if we're going to do it, we should start now.
I guess my, what I, how I recommended that is that would be now.
Now.
I mean, as of right now, that's where those would go.
Yes, Commissioner Mojo.
Just a follow-up, you know, on that, and I really appreciate that Anna brought forward the piece on the hiring component that we talked about. And three, four years ago, it was a challenging time. I know we've done wage studies. I feel like, you know, we've paid employees really fairly, but part of the really challenging piece is the outlier on what's left to wrap up in regards to union negotiations and other pieces that really will affect '26 and '27 going forward. And those are the really challenging parts that we have because we want to be delicate about that. But as you said, that is the largest driver of what the the budget is and wanting to make sure that we are meeting what the public's needs are as we can in the most efficient way possible. But it is, you know, there are some pieces out there that could drastically change what the budget looks like. And, you know, I appreciate that you're working with department heads and how they communicate to staff as well on those challenges.
Mr. Chair, I did have one, one more thing, just from a clarification standpoint. I did provide Mr. Joe Razzo from the Greater Fargo More Economic Development CEO, the board's recommendation funding mechanism for next year. And he was looking for clarification, just from the public standpoint. If you recall, last year, we paid the Greater Fargo More at EDC and the Chamber in a one-lump amount of $185,000. During our preliminary levy, this board made the determination, was my understanding, that they would provide the Chamber $85,000 and the the EDC $10,000. And so with that, Mr. Razzo was asking about whether or not the county would be wishing to provide or be part of Innovate '28. And if so, then they would be looking for a one-lump sum to be paid through through the Greater Fargo More Economic Development, and then $85,000 would be provided to the Chamber. Then they would, you would be considered part of Innovate '28. Or if they each singly invoiced you the $10,000 and the $85,000 Or if they each singly invoiced you the $10,000 and the $85,000, that you would not be part of Innovate '28. So just coming here for clarification for the board of what your interpretation of the funding mechanism for next year were.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Ebbering.
I've been on the board, executive board with the EDC since I've been on the commission. I do not see a return in investment. With the Chamber, I certainly do. And I think the Chamber has done things that have impacted most commissioners here in a very positive sense. I think what I heard the commission say is that we're gonna direct $10,000 to the EDC, $85,000 to the Chamber, and I think that's how it needs to be paid. I do not see any value in Innovate '28 for Minnesota's side. It is basically focused directly at Vismark, and that's a good thing for Fargo, West Fargo and Cass County and adjoining counties that they have in North Dakota. But I don't see anything beneficial for our side. So however they wanna work this, I do not see a benefit for the citizens of Clay County for us to be part of Innovate '28.
Commissioner Kravina.
Yeah, yes, I thought we were already pretty clear on this. So just going back to a little bit what Dave just said, no, we aren't part of the Innovate in '28. And in specific, I think Mr. Razzo and Russell in his comment talked about how just by giving the $10,000, I'm going off memory here, we would be considered a sponsor or member or something, what?
An investor.
Investor, there we go. And that's what I see. I thought we already talked through this.
Is that, does that?
It appears that it's clear. I'll, I'll, I'll share with, share with both the Chamber and the EDC that they'll be getting separate invoices.
Yeah, so my understanding is $85,000 is going to the Chamber. And $10,000 is going to the Greater Fargo Morehead EDC. Which last year, the combination of those two was 185.
Correct.
And now it's 95.
Great.
Correct. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Anything else on budget issues? You know, so we had, what, about $335,000 improvement today on our budget discussion? If you do that every week now, Steve, between now and the end of the year, we'll be in good shape.
We're continuing to look, Mr. Chair, and hope to have a few different things before in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you. All right, we are well past, well, we got a, we're 10 minutes past our adjourn time. I know we've got, and we've got two weeks. So if we can kinda go through our reports quickly, we'll start with Commissioner Bear.
On September 28th, I was up in Crookston with the West Central Regional Water District, and we gave a presentation to the House bonding tour. That went very well, I thought. There was about six of us from that committee that were up there and a busload of House members. They asked a couple of questions, but they've heard, they've heard it before, so they, we just gave them a recap on it. And then on September 29th, I had the West Central Regional Water District meeting in Halsted, where we went over the legislative update. And we are getting close to the final survey being done. We have another meeting come up next Monday with hopefully the final survey being completed. So then we can send out the surveys and get on the docket for the judge coming here hopefully by the end of the year. And what are, our budget, we're sitting on roughly $21,000, and that's why we're pushing to get this in front of the judge. And that is about all I have to update on that as of now.
Thank you. Commissioner Ebbering.
Yes, on Wednesday, the 24th of September, I joined the Legislative Bonding Tour. We came up from Wolferton and across some of the projects on Minnesota's side and looked at them.
Georgetown.
Georgetown, I'm sorry. Overall, you know, I, it was, an exercise was focused, I think, the, for the, for the overall project. And we'll see how the legislature goes with it, but we were present and we expressed the needs for them. On the 25th, I attended the Greater Fargo Morehead EDC Board Meeting. Again, it was a lengthy Innovate '28 update. And we discussed a dashboard that's being put in showing their achievements in recruitment, retention and developing systems, most of which were kinda tied to North Dakota movements on it. Governance Committee is working with a board development project. They have survey results that this agency put together for them. And that completes that. On the second, I attended the emergency, or I virtually attended the Emergency Communication Legislative Committee meeting. Looked a lot at the skip, that's a statewide communication interoperability plan, goals that we're trying to set up for future operations. They're being worked on. There is some progress there. We've had a constant problem with getting revisions to the statute language that we've got for working with our service providers, particularly in outstate. And the 403 Work Group is part of that, and it's not convened in over a year. They are going to get a mediator in there apparently sometime next year. So we'll be prepared to address these issues in 2027 with the legislature. There's also discussion on AI being considered into legislation. So we have some controls as AI becomes, evidently it becomes a part of Next Generation 911. So there needs to be some data rules in place and use rules for the AI issues. Later that day, I virtually attended a meeting with the Treatment Court Initiative Advisory Committee. I am on that committee, which is operated by the Minnesota Judicial Branch, as a representative for the Public Safety AMC. They, one of the, the committee wanted a county commissioner on it. This apparently, and I was not aware of it, but it's gonna be an ongoing position with monthly meetings. We are trying to really do a lot of work in setting up operational subcommittees to address things. And I've been asked to be part of the law enforcement one. I've declined immediately until I find out what kinda impact that's gonna have on my schedule. We do have monthly meetings. Jade Rosenfeld, the judge here in Clay County, has also just been appointed to this committee. I think it's gonna be productive. This, this commission has had a commitment to specialty courts, drug courts, veterans courts, DWI courts for years, and I think we need to continue with that. I certainly wouldn't think anything I do here in Clay County would be part of it. But for what I am doing right now with the Treatment Court Initiative Advisory Committee, I would like that to be part of my portfolio. Because it's turned out a little bit of a, an amount of time and effort that I would like to have some compensation for, particularly if they're gonna get me into subcommittees. Again, we've always had a commitment to these courts as a commission. And anything locally I would do or meetings with Judge Rosenfeld, that kinda thing, I certainly wouldn't think of as part of that portfolio. I think that is my responsibilities here. But I'll leave that to the commission if that's something anybody would be interested in taking action on. What we did do during that meeting is we looked at grant and many grant proposals and reviewed the state standard updates. There were four issues that they wanted to vote on, but there was so much information connected to them. They gave us two days and then came back and they had a four-page survey where our response to, responses to that signified a vote on some of the issues that they were, they were covering. So that's a very logical and it's a well-designed process. But when you've got a panel that's comprised mostly of judges and lawyers, you're gonna have a lot of time and material involved.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to put that as in his portfolio. Okay, we have a motion. And we have a second by Commissioner Kravina. And again, I guess, can that be considered under his portfolio of public safety with AMC?
I have that position in there, but I wanna be transparent and bring this forward before I, I could claim it on that.
Well, I guess.
I wanna make sure the commission's comfortable with.
I guess, I guess that's what, how I'd like to see it done. And the one thing, because these meetings, they do have minutes, right?
Oh, yeah.
And that's, because that's part of the requirement. So I would say that that would maybe qualify under your position in public safety. That would be my, it'd be under your portfolio, under the AMC public policy.
Is it a defined work group?
As in, yeah, it's with the, with the state of Minnesota, it's by the legislative, Minnesota Legislative Branch.
The only reason I bring that up is I think you were on a work group that looked at the legislative pay. I was on the tax forfeiture work group, and we did have it as a subset and that. So if it's cleaner to do it that way, maybe we should.
Right, well, that's.
Okay. Again, I just didn't wanna start claiming it and find out it was outside the comfort zone of any or all of you. Thank you. And then the last.
Well, hang on, we gotta vote.
Oh, okay.
Unless you don't want us to vote on it. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. All right.
Thank you. And then the last meeting I had was on, or no, I've already covered. No, I didn't cover the September 25th, the Diversion Board of Authority. We had a meeting and it's been so long, I don't remember. Chair, do you, do you remember the details?
I've got it. I can report on it.
Okay. I've got the, I'll yield to you on that. Thank you.
Mr. Kravina.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Going back to the 23rd, we had a PRTF small group prep meeting for the housing, the House bonding tour that was gonna be the next day. And putting things together to finalize our video, which was shown and came out very well, 24th. And we did have the House bonding tour. I thought it went extremely well and very good attention, very engaged House members and to staff and to Commissioner Mojo for all the work they put together beginning that tour in place. It was seamless, I thought, and the work that we did that afternoon. On the 25th, we had a Family Resource Center stakeholder meeting. There were about 15 organizations as part of that. I'll bet there were 70 people. Fantastic work going on for something that has only just been funded for a short period of time. Just kudos to Creative Community and then along with the two navigators from CAP LP. They're holding, they have a place of information and people we can come to in three locations now, Morehead Library and the Morehead Academy, as well as with Reach and Holly. After that, I had my CAP LP Finance and Board of Directors meeting down in Breckenridge. Main things were two operational budgets. We had a spotlight on Head Start. That was the main part of that meeting. On the second, I had the Children's Mental Health, about 13 providers showed up for that, big, big group. And they went through agency reports, but mostly, there was a discussion in depth at the end about, and we talk about it from time to time, it's these kids that are 16, 17, 18, 19, that they're coming out of their foster homes. There's things that are changing in their life. They still need, you know, the mental health, you know, services that they've had. And now they are out on their own and in many cases on the edge of homeless. And, you know, our schools are, keep us informed of some of that. But anyway, it's again, more about finding, in this case, it was trying to find shelter for a 17-year-old, or 17-year-old girl. So anyway, great discussion and this group was really gelled together and sharing information. On the third, I had another PRTF meeting, again, follow-up to the Housing Committee. And I'll let Commissioner Mojo speak to this more, but it was on our next steps. And part of those next steps are the development of creating podcasts. Then I had the Historical and Cultural Society Finance and Government meeting. It was a solid meeting in between those two committees in doing updates to employee benefits. And then on the fifth, last night, I had the Morehead Planning Commission. And on that, three, three open hearings. One was, there's gonna be a new out-of-sales place where the muffler man was in Morehead. And commerce, or the approval of a digital sign down on East Street. And then one I found interesting, they're finally replanting the area where the Enheiser Bush plant is and making it its own parcel. And then that ag land to the south of it, 40-some acres is gonna be, will end up being rezoned for commercial. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On September 23rd, I had a meeting prepping the presentation for the House bonding tour, not only the non-secure detention component, but the flood mitigation request. Just wanna give huge gratitude to all of our staff for the immense amount of work that went into that presentation and the documents that were utilized the next day. On the 24th, I attended the Red River Basin Commission Joint Powers Board. We had a great presentation on the water district that, the presentation that Commissioner Bear talked about, and then talked about items of mutual interest. And then later that afternoon, we did have the bonding tour. We hosted them at the Juvenile Detention Center, discussed the challenges that we have with the regional facility, how we really believe this is a state implied issue and how we can utilize their support with it. Then did follow them to the tour at Morehead State and had further dialogue with the representatives at that meeting. On the 24th, or 5th, rather, I attended the SWAC Committee meeting, general business. Happy to report that Clay County and the city of Morehead were able to reach a, an agreement on the contract and it will proceed as it was previously written. Later that day, I attended the MCC JPA meeting, did have a property status acquisition report and talked about Minnesota litigation. And did a approval of a reimbursement for a culvert installation and approved payment to the Minnesota commissioners that are used for landowners' grievances, if I will. I think that's probably the best way to say it. Later that day, we had the MetroCog meeting, long, long meeting, as there were several meeting, several folks from Fargo and North Dakota present to present their concerns with a future 64th interchange in Fargo. And did have good reports on all the other components. I was able to attend virtually the CAP LP meeting that was presented on by Commissioner Kravina. On the 26th, I attended a legislative strategy meeting, not only with the non-secure detention, but the PRTF and how we move forward in advocating the concerns that Clay County has to the legislature. Feel like it's a really great opportunity for us to gather some information to share to the legislative representatives. On the 29th, I attended the goodbye luncheon for Jackie. Appreciate her work there and wish both her and her husband the best. wish both her and her husband the best. On October 3rd, I attended a Legislative Strategy meeting, as outlined with the Chamber, the city of Moorhead, Clay County, the Water District, and also our team with the non-secure detention piece. Yesterday, I traveled to Alexandria and attended the Minnesota Rural Counties Fall Business Meeting. Were able to set our three legislative priorities, which really closely align with what AMC is doing. Counties are really seeing the biggest shift that we are incurring is occurring from the state, and a lot of that has to do with social services, as was discussed earlier. So our number-one priority is the programming, SSIS, modernization component, mental health capacities, and then the solid waste issues, which also aligns with one of the Environment Natural Resources Policy Committee pieces. And then we did have updates from folks on what they're seeing for levies. I think Roseau and Hubbard are seeing 15% and 11% increases on their levies. The lowest yesterday, I think, was 3%, but they were having to really cut programs big time, but certainly all of us are trying our best to sharpen our pencils in the best way possible, but it is an uphill battle when stuff seems to roll downhill from DC and St. Paul. Yesterday, I also attended the MetroCog meeting, Executive Committee meeting, while we did discuss the meeting outline for '26 and future presentations, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Before I start on mine, I just want to go back to our budget discussion just for a second, and, you know, I think when we talk about 80% of our budget being employees, and one of our greatest opportunities that we can make changes is through attrition. And, you know, so when we start talking about bringing things forward to pick, you know, I think all of our supervisors at the same point in time might be able, or should be looking at, how can things change with somebody leaving, and what could we might do different? A good example is what was done when we received notice of Jackie leaving, right? So that's a perfect example of that. You know, it's not laying anybody off, but at the same point in time, how can, how might we do something different? But I, just for clarification, I know Commissioner Mojo, we talked about if we're going to do this, going to pick starting now. Is it the consensus of this board that that's what we want to start now?
Yeah.
Are we, because I don't think there was a motion made to that, but I don't know that we...
Do you want a motion?
Okay, we can have a motion.
I'll make a motion that all the new hires go through pick before they come to us?
Hires to fill...
Yeah, open positions.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Bear and second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same motion carried. Thank you for the clarification, so I'll go into my report. September 24th, we had a Prairie Lake Solid Waste meeting. I'll keep it short. We're about 30, let's see, $45,000 less in our cash balance than we had at the end of August than we had previous year at that time, but we're still in good shape there. We are on schedule to have about 51,554 tons processed. We had budgeted for 55,000, which isn't the greatest news. And then our deliveries, Clay County is a negative 320, but that was also at the end of August, but by the time we had our meeting, it was down to 220. So it's still within that range where we all felt acceptable. On Thursday, the 25th, we started the day with Solid Waste Advisory Committee. Commissioner Mojo reported on that. I think the biggest issue there was the, you know, reporting that we've entered into that agreement with the city. I really, Corey gave a really good update on different solid waste issues, whether it's at the landfill or the resource recovery facility.
Mr. Chair, I have one question on that agreement.
Yes.
Is that long-term, or is it still a year out?
So, so the current, with city now?
Yeah, with the city.
So, the new agreement, and again, it's, this is, I think what I asked for was an addendum to the previous agreement, which basically extended the contract out an additional three years. And in addition to that, it clarified the position on the 57% being paid by Moorhead because we don't have the separate meters, and so that's in there just clarifying that that's because in the previous agreement, that wasn't in there. And then the other thing that I wanted to put in there to show that, you know, and that was the Scale House position, which was, which is a county-funded position, which wasn't in the previous agreement. So we wanted that in there to show that that's just another thing that we picked up as part of that whole process, so.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
That answers my question. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yep. So then, then from there, I went to Fergus Falls for the Lakes Country Service Cooperative, and I basically represent, that's a separate, I represent just county boards on that co-op, and several different things were talked about, but I'm not going to get into the weeds on that at this point in time. Then I got back here in time for the Moorhead-Clay County Joint Powers Authority meeting, which Commissioner Mojo gave a complete report, so I don't have anything to add to that. And then later that day, then we had the Diversion Board of Authority meeting, and again, you know, we certainly get updates on, we got, on the consent agenda, we had issues regarding MOUs in different areas. We have a compliance specialist position update. We had a recap of project tours, and we continue to really monitor that budget moving forward. And that's all on that. And then lastly, on October, or excuse me, on September 29th, I had the West Central Regional Water District meeting. Commissioner Bear talked about that. I don't have any more to add. And then on October 3rd, I also attended the, basically through our Chamber Public Policy Committee, we had a review of the House visit to all of our different projects, as well as planning moving forward for dealing with our legislative asks. And that continues to end, talking about our priorities and strategizing those. That concludes my report. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the 23rd, participated in the bonding planning meeting, bonding tour and planning meeting, which has been covered. On the 24th, I met with Mr. Jacobson in regards to today's public hearing. On the 23rd, also met with Lori Johnson, continuing to look at our budget. On the 24th, participated in the bonding tour, again, thanks to the commission and all of our staff, including our Communications Department, for the work that they did in preparation of that meeting. That went extremely well. On the 25th, I met with MCIT and several liability claims ongoing. On the 25th, participated in the MCC JPA Board Meeting, which has been covered. On the 29th, participated in the West Central Water District Board Meeting, that also has been covered. On the 29th and 30th, participated in the Public Health Director interviews. On the 1st through the 3rd, I was at, with Darren at the Macrame Annual Conference. Appreciate the opportunity to be there. AMC provided, heard, we heard updates from Matt Hilgarth, Julie Ring. I also heard updates on pay equity, dealing with change, open meeting laws, and PTSD, and workman comp's changes that have happened. We also saw, had paid family medical discussion, and also looked at the first draft of the legislative priorities that we're going to be talking about at AMC district meetings, and then ultimately the policy conference in December. It was awesome to see that one of the priorities deals with mental health, and while it doesn't name our facility by name, it talks about the importance of investing into both adult and juvenile facilities. So the work that this board's doing is reaching the areas that we hope it to. On the 26th, or excuse me, on the 6th, worked on MMB documents, both for updating the information for flood mitigation, and also our non-secure detention facility, that those updates are due by the 17th for funding requests. Also, just an update for our employees, we'll be having a fall flu vaccination clinic on the 9th from 8:15 to 2:00 PM over in Suite 105 at the Family Service Center. And just note for the board, I received a notice yesterday from the State Historical Preservation Review Board that Clay County has the Gron Luther Church in Rolog is up for consideration for the Natural Registry of Historic Places, and the nominations are going to be discussed at a meeting on August 6th. That concludes my report? October, or November. Sorry. No, let me see.
I've got it right here.
Darren?
Tuesday, November 18th.
There you go. Darren?
Okay, thank you. A lot of mine has already been covered. On the 24th, I worked on an evaluation, worked on updating a risk assessment form that we've been using, and I also attended the PRTF House Bonding Tour. On the 25th, I attended the SWAC meeting as well, completed the VSO's evaluation, prepped for attorney's negotiations, and compiled data from other counties in preparation for further negotiations from our counties. On the 26th, I had the attorney's second negotiations. On the 29th, I participated in the Public Health Director interviews as well, and on the 30th, we finished up those Public Health Directors interviews. As Steve said, from October 1st to the 3rd, I was also at the Maca-Macrame Conference, which has already been covered, and then the 6th, yesterday, just preparing for three negotiations that we have tomorrow and Thursday with the LEC admin assistance, the corrections and the detox, and also worked on the 2026 budget estimate update, which you talked about a little bit in your budget discussion today. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Sarah, anything for us today? Just get done, right? All right, if we have nothing else, we will be adjourned. Thank you.